Okay.
I heard it.
Great. So I I'm happy to read this for you, Ernest. The time is now, let's see, six oh nine P M.
Yep.
Ernest Costin is calling to order the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission on June twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, public hearing. Commissioners present are Commissioners Ernest Costin, Andrew Shelburne, and Angela Ward Hyatt. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three amendment extending the suspension of these provisions until June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. We are conducting this meeting online. And let me just see a few more people trying to join. To ensure public access to the to the deliberations of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. Are there any media or elected officials currently present? If so, would you please raise your hand, state your name, title, and affiliation? Seeing none, members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing. And our agenda this evening, our first item, a business ratification of the May twenty second two twenty five public hearing minutes for design review, we have application twenty four point one 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 zero twenty seven Kennelworth Street. Proposed new park related to new multifamily building approved by the commission on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Application twenty five point zero eight six seven sixty nine Center Street, construct two-story addition to existing two-story house. Application twenty five point zero nine five one, three-seater square, construct a new residential building on a vacant lot. Application twenty five point zero nine five one, ten Malcolm X Boulevard, preservation of the existing Roxbury Boys Club structure while replacing surface parking with a new public open space, construction of a six-story multifamily rental building, and construction of a three-story multifamily homeownership building with a new amenity open space. Then we'll have an update on the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission bylaws, staff updates, and then adjournment. And I do see a few people in the waiting room.
All right. So Joe, just for clarity, that looked like there was six things on your agenda.
Uh, we've got four design review items.
Okay, and four design, okay, plus four design review, okay. All right, sounds like full agenda.
Uh, yes. Uh, Commissioner Ward Hyatt has has her hand up.
Yep, and Angela, I just made you a co-host, so you should be able to unmute yourselves.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay. All right, so we can go to our first item of business, Ernest, which is the ratification of the public hearing minutes from the May twenty second, twenty twenty five hearing.
Okay, what does it need from me now?
Uh, well, if has everyone had a chance to review the minutes and if anyone has any additions or edits?
I I've read them and and they look they look fine to me.
Yeah, same for me.
All right, no adjustments or comments on the minutes?
No.
All right, then let them be accepted as submitted?
Can I make a motion?
Yeah. Here, entertain a motion to accept the minutes?
Sec- seconded.
Oh, well, Ernest, Andrew, do you want to be the first?
Oh, sorry, for, uh, yes, it's, uh, in favor.
Okay, then Angela, were you something?
I will second.
Thank you.
I can do the roll call vote, Ernest Costin?
Present.
Angela Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
And Andrew Shelburne?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving along, Ernest, we're going to move to our first agenda item, twenty seven Kennelworth Street. Proposed new park related to new multifamily building approved by the commission on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
All right. Are they ready?
Yeah, I think Evan Smith should be here, Evan.
Yeah, Evan, you you presenting?
I am. Hi, Ernest, how you doing?
Good, my friend. Good to see you. Family well, I trust.
Yeah, boy keeps getting bigger, but you can't stop that.
Yeah, you got a twenty-year commitment there. All right, go ahead.
Joe, sorry, we made a couple of updates on the renderings. Do you mind if I share this?
Oh, sure, sure. And then before you start, I'm just going to read my staff comments. So I'm going to stop sharing so you can share. And I'll just read my staff comments.
Thank you, Joe.
Uh huh. Okay, uh, let's see. The commission approved the construction of a multi-unit residential building at this location in July twenty twenty four with the proviso that the applicant return to the commission with final designs for the proposed park. Staff comments that one existing tree at twenty seven Kennelworth was approved for removal as part of the commission's twenty twenty four approval of this project. This project includes six stone structures for display of public art. It should be noted that the content of artwork is outside of the purview of the Highland Park E C D C. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval with provisos, finding that the proposed pocket park increases green space and enhances the character defining features of this area of the district. Final design details, including paving, should be remanded to staff for final review and approval. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you. One one other thing, our member Sean Webster is on the is is joining us. Could you also make?
Yeah, I think we have the, I think we have the wrong Webster on, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna become a co-host right now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, um, so I'll get started. So, um, Minku, are you able to put that in slide?
Yes.
Uh, can I show you?
Full screen?
Yeah, that'd be helpful. We'll look small on our end.
Can you see it full screen?
Not yet.
Okay, let me.
I can see it fine.
Okay, all right. Oh, there we go. Perfect. All right, so I'm here to present our concept for the pocket park at the corner of Dudley Street and Kennelworth Street. Uh, my name is Evan Smith. I'm a developer of the project of Corner. Um, Minku Kane is my owner's project manager, working with me on these projects. And then Sean Webster is here as well, representing Copper Collective. Next slide, Minku. So tonight, what we're doing, looking for approval of the concept of the pocket park, and then also looking for approval of the concept of community art post. Next slide. Just to orient everybody, what we are dealing with is a, what's known as a pocket park on a slice of land that is owned by the city of Boston at the intersection of Dudley and Kennelworth Street. Um, I see a number of people that are directly abutting this are on the call. So as I'm sure you know, that intersection is currently quite wide, quite dangerous, about eighty feet wide. Uh, crosswalks are mostly non-existent. Um, traffic patterns are not very clear. People speak through that section. I live on Lambert Ave. I try to turn onto Dudley Street every morning and almost get clipped every morning because of the speed that people come down Dudley Street. Um, and it just seems like a waste of public space overall. It's a sea of asphalt where there could be some green space. So as part of our development at the adjoining lot, we suggested to do this pocket park a couple of years ago. We're back now for approval of the overall design. Um, the pocket park, we're seeking to do a few different things here. We're seeking to honor the neighborhood's history while creating space for future creativity, make a safer, more walkable intersection, and also just bring some green space and some seating space on the walk up the hill from Newby and Square. Next slide. So, um, yes, this slide accurately shows, so there's a current sidewalk edge that you can see highlighted by the dark line there. And we are proposing extending the sidewalks and the curbing out towards the center of the intersection, allowing us to put a range of plantings, eight new trees, and a cool art display option, which will show in a second. Next slide. Oh, Minku also wanted to note that this also generates four new public parking spaces um, that will be public usable by all, by extending that sidewalk out. Next slide. So on this slide, you can see some of the specific details. I'm going to go from left to right. Um, so on the left side, you see that we are creating new handicap accessible ramps with matching co-ramps on the other side of the street that will reduce it from what is currently an eighty-foot crossing down to a city standard of twenty-one feet, uh, crossing between the two different streets. Along with that, there will be a wire cut brick buffer around the sidewalk so that there's a little bit of a spite on the corner and so that plantings are also protected during snowfall and snow plowing. Then, as we move to the right from the new accessible ramps, you'll see that there's a landscape buffer. This will be a range of perennials and durable plants that will survive through our harsh winters. And as we move further right, we get to the main area of the parklet, which is going to be predominantly a bluestone or granite paver, T V D, with work with the B L C staff, uh, along with a number of seating areas, seating stones, and art posts. And then finally, as we move further to the right, there will be a buffer between the parklet and the new building being built on the corner. Next slide. So this is a rendering of our proposed parklet. Um, in this, you can see the trees, the seating areas, and the art posts, which I will go into a bit more detail on some of the next slides. Next slide. This is a view from a slightly different angle, showing the landscape buffers out corner along with the um, curb cuts and crosswalks. Next slide. We're planning on using a range of plantings that can withstand the climate here. Uh, the trees are currently specified as columnar red maples, which keep a fairly tight shape and grow to be about twenty-five to thirty feet tall. We're choosing this variety because, one, they do fairly well in urban environments. Two, they stay contained so that they, in theory, should not completely buckle sidewalk in ten to fifteen years. And two, they look beautiful in the fall. They grow, glow red uh, once we get to the fall. Um, other plantings, got some lavender shown in there, uh, pan- pannicum, um, a number of different types of grasses, and some of these details will be worked out further with the L C staff. Next slide. For the paving areas, we're suggesting, uh, bluestone flagstone for the the main area. Um, due to A D A requirements, the main sidewalks will stay concrete, but the area in between the two sidewalks will be bluestone um, and or granite, depending on final decisions with the L C staff. And then our seating areas are going to be made out of quarry stone, something selected to match some of the existing granite that's found on site. Next slide. So, um, I mentioned this art post a few times, um, and this kind of, we have been talking for quite a while about the idea of creating a canvas for um, either permanent or rotating art to occur on this corner. And we have been talking about this idea of a monolithic piece of stone that could have artwork displayed on it. And one day I was walking up Gardner Street up onto Center Street, and I walked by that little milestone um, that sits on the base of the stone wall below, uh, the Page Academy. Um, and remember that there are these milestones throughout Roxbury, and these are some of some examples here. And I find them just fascinating because they're predominantly from seventeen hundreds, early eighteen hundreds, and they represent mile markers between Boston and Providence. Um, Center Street used to be the main road that would go down Providence via J P. And you can actually, if you look close enough, you can see how many miles it is to Providence on a number of these milestones. Um, this, to me, acts as a great concept for this art park because what we want to represent is an opportunity for someone to display both historical information. So, you know, um, members of the community who have been historically important, um, we can probably list a number of them within this group, but uh, you know, there haven't been many opportunities in the neighborhood to actually pay homage to those people, and so this could be an opportunity for that. It's also an opportunity to to talk about where the neighborhood is going and where the community is going through forward-looking artwork, uh, you know, young artists, local artists, people who have been here for a while and wanted to display something. So, uh, as Joe mentioned, we're, uh, we don't have a final plan yet for what that artwork is, but what we want to do, uh, as developers and builders here is create a canvas for artwork to be displayed. Um, what they are are slabs of stone. They're roughly three foot high, about seven foot wide. They'll be properly anchored into the ground, and they'll be double-sided. So could be, you know, duality of one side is historical, one side is future. All kinds of ideas could be had. So we'll get there in future meetings. Um, and with that, I'm going to lead into introducing Sean Webster, uh, who is going to effectively be our curator uh, for the artwork portion of this, which will be figured out at a later date in conjunction with the community. Uh, Sean, you want to jump on and say a bit about yourself and the awesome work that you do?
Sure thing. Thank you, Evan. Hey, everyone. My name is Sean from Copper Collective. Uh, I've been a lifelong resident of Roxbury and specifically the Highland Park neighborhood. So I've got a special connection to the neighborhood and a deep passion for seeing it grow into a more accessible and creative community. Um, to talk a little bit about Copper Collective, we're a group of artists, educators, and entrepreneurs from Roxbury in the greater Boston area. And over the years, we've led a range of community activations, um, from small-scale activations like facilitating um, the revitalization of community gardens in the neighborhood or or surrounding neighborhoods to just other community cleanups, block parties, things of that nature, and then even larger things like public events, festivals, art-making experiences. And, you know, over the years, we've curated, uh, at least nine murals throughout the neighborhood, uh, six of them being in the Dudley Street neighborhood, some being on our property down at Elmwood Street with some rotating art that we did with Project Billboard Hope. Um, so obviously have that direct connection to local artists, and our work is is rooted in deep relationships with the community, with local artists, with people that have been here and have a story to tell, um, and are and are fighting to kind of preserve uh, their their work, their their identity, and their connection to the neighborhood. Uh, as curators, we're really going to prioritize reclaiming and representing these public spaces appropriately um, and centering a variety of voices and community perspectives. We want to bring together a variety of stakeholders to to have conversations. In recent projects that we've done in the Dudley Street neighborhood, you know, it looked like a number of facilitated conversations between both between both the artists and elders and young people and contributors and institutions. So we want to bring that same process to this project and think that this location is really primed to be, um, a staple in the neighborhood for a variety of things. I know that there's people in the direct neighborhood that I can already imagine, um, would want to do some incredible things there. So we're going to be really welcoming to that. Um, and yeah, we're we're excited to bring this this vision to life, this creativity, and you know, we're dedicated to making this pocket park something special and really representative of of Roxbury um, and its people, its heritage, its culture and history. So, uh, I'm excited. That's who I am. That's Copper Collective. I'll pass it back to you, Evan.
Sorry, I'm missing the mute button. Thank you, Sean. Um, yeah, and that's basically it for the presentation. Um, just for a note, I mean, if you want to go forward to the next slide, uh, just for recollection, this was the building that was approved last July by this board. Um, so we're not getting into that tonight. And then, um, next slide. Just also for note, um, we've already talked to Boston Transportation and the Public Improvement Commission, and we've had a civil engineer work through, uh, turning radiuses uh, for fire trucks and large trucks. Uh, so our current design meets requirements for the urban landscape. We've also had conversations with Boston Water Sewer regarding any utilities that need to be upgraded or moved or aware and on, uh, board for making those changes. Um, and once the design is approved by the L C, our next step will be to create formal engineering drawings to uh, enter this into the public space. Uh, next slide. Uh, and then one last little note, um, as it might come up, um, on the thirty-nine forty-five Dudley Street uh, site, uh, we had talked about previously, there's a whole lot of granite curbing that's there. Um, I'm planning on reusing that as part of the park. There's a number of spots where we will need granite and, um, hoping to incorporate all those pieces into it. And with that, I'll turn it over to the commission.
Thank you very much, Evan. Um, it was good presentation. So, uh, if any of the other commissioners would like to, uh, comment on Evan's presentation?
And Ernest, Ernest, I just want to mention that Commissioner Fadi Samaha has joined us. So thank you, Fadi, for joining us. Good to have you.
Thank you, thank you.
That's 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 fantastic. Um, we have a little bit of surplus in our situation now in terms of having enough people. So anyway, um, I don't know, Fadi, if you had a chance to hear the presentation?
I I caught it. I caught it halfway through, but I'll just hear you guys out right now.
All right. So if any of the other commissioners have any comments on the presentation, now would be a good time. Thank you.
I'll, uh, this is Commissioner Shelburne. I'll go ahead if if, um, if others, uh, don't have any comments.
No.
There may be, there may be other comments, but, you know, go ahead.
Is that is that okay with everyone?
Please.
Um, do, um, Evan, do you do you have a landscape architect involved in this? Uh, no, we don't. We're working directly with the city. Uh, I have a landscape architecture background, so we don't have a separate architect involved. Okay, it might be, you know, it might be warranted in this situation to to at least get seek the advice, you know, of a landscape architect. Um, I don't know. Do you, do you have, uh, have you designed a public park like this before? I have, actually, yes. You know, in Sudbury, um, I designed a couple for a couple of different churches back in the early two thousands. So this is actually my background before being a general contractor and a builder. So given the scale of this park and given the capabilities of, um, other staff within the city, I feel completely comfortable picking species and, uh, and doing layout for these these plantings. Okay, does the, does the city require any, any kind of drainage for this park? Yeah, so as I discussed, uh, we're already working with a civil engineer. And the civil engineer will design all of the slopes for all the sidewalks. They'll design all the drainage patterns. They'll design the, um, there will have to be a couple of catch basins um, in strategic locations. There's going to have to be drainage, uh, where the trees are so that the roots don't get soaked. So, yes, we have a civil engineer on board who handles all of that in conjunction with Boston Water Sewer and P I C. Okay, thank you. It, I don't know if that's, if I'm looking at this correctly, but but the rendering makes it look like the park is sunk about six inches below the sidewalk. There is a curb currently shown on the upper side there because there is a grade change. Um, okay. The advisement of P I C was to keep, um, there's a change in grade from one edge to the other. And the advisement currently is to keep it as level as possible for the enjoyment of the main area. And then there's a curb stop there to differentiate between, uh, what's effectively a twelve-inch drop off off the other side. So no handrail is required, given the the low height of it, but a curb stop is there to prevent anybody from a wheelchair from, you know, making an uncomfortable transition. So. Got it. So that that, um, that six-inch drop down is just on the Dudley Street side of the park, correct? Just on the Dudley Street side, and then the paving will be flush with the sidewalk on the Kennelworth side. Understood, understood. Okay. Um, I I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I I would, I would like to see the, you know, it comes to like that very sharp, sharp point. And I would love to see that kind of rounded off there, but I don't know what how the other commissioners feel. Um, and I would like to see, it looks like the the planter that's against the building has a six-inch curb um, against around it. I would also like to see a six-inch curb around the other planting beds. Um, just to kind of keep people from walking through it because, you know, or I mean, it's not going to stop them, right, a six-inch curb, but it, you know, people might walk over the landscaping if it's convenient, um, unfortunately. But I I think it would also help hold the soil. And, uh, it would look much better, you know. I mean, the precedence we were thinking about looking at was the, um, the Kittredge Park, right, which has a lot of nice granite, um, curbing on it. Go go ahead. I'll I'll pause. Yeah, I don't know that I would, um, put curving and create those into raised beds, um, necessarily because in talking with, uh, B T D, um, it's likely that that is where the, uh, is going to be where if we get, you know, those two or three-foot snowstorms um, that we get from time to time, this will be, um, the the end there where the perennials are shown will likely be where snow ends up being placed. And curbing out there, well, that's fine. That's the reason we're using perennials and not shrubs and trees is because we, perennials are gone in the middle of winter, like they get cut down to nothing. So, um, this is intentional, um, you know, to plant it this way so that we're not putting something out on that corner that would get destroyed by large trucks, snow plowings, fire trucks, et cetera. So um, it is intentional where it is now. Um, and I don't, while we could, um, in theory, do that, I I don't know that that's the best best design detail there. Um, in terms of the point, I'm totally agnostic as to whether or not we round that off or not. And and I think that's a detail that we can probably work through with the L C. I I don't care either way. If we want to round that off, great, we'll round it off. And another suggestion would be, um, you know, so folks don't, I know, you know, you mentioned how crazy people drive around there. You know, you're going to reuse some of that granite, granite, uh, uh, pieces from the site. You know, it might be good to make some bollards out of those and put them kind of near the front of that radius so that people don't just drive right into this park, you know, like on, you know, they've had too much to drink and it'd be, it'd be a shame. That's a, that's a good idea. I I, yeah, I'm totally open to that. And, um, it's worth noting, too, they're not shown in the rendering because we don't have a final location from, uh, P I C yet, but there's going to be at least one, maybe two light poles that are going to end up in those planting beds. And then there's also going to be a fire hydrant out there somewhere as well. So there will be some other physical objects that stand up. So. But I I like your idea of reusing the granite. Um, we could totally add a post to you out there. It'd be good also to see if you could protect the hydrant with the granite, um, bollards, you know, um, because, uh, you know, yeah, it they might get hit, you know, because that's such a dangerous intersection. Uh, let me look through. I had some more written comments here. Um, um, sorry, I'm bear with me here. I'm just reading through my comments. Um, oh, and and you have verified that the trees are not planted too cro- close together so that they could grow into mature trees? They they do look a little bit close, but I'm not a landscape architect, so. Yeah, so, um, the version of red maple we're using is a column, columnar red, uh, maple. Um, so it has a So it has a very cylindrical shape to it. Most red maples actually get rounder and they get to be about a twenty, twenty-five foot radius. This one will stay somewhere around a ten to twelve foot radius, which is how we spaced out the trees. So.
Okay. I like, I like the art panels. That's a good idea. And I like it block seats, but I would like to request that you maybe mix in like three or four just metal benches somewhere in there that, because, I mean, the granite blocks are cool, but I just don't know how long, if it would be comfortable to sit on those for very long, you know? That, those are my comment. Yeah, I'm sorry?
The granite blocks are going to have a milled top finish, so they will be smooth like a bench.
Okay. It'd just be a little nice to have. I like, I like the stone features. I really do. I think that's very thoughtful. I like the paving. I just think, you know, just, it would be nice to mix up the seating a little bit. Those are my comments for now. I'll rest and let other commissioners speak. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. Any other commissioners?
I'll jump in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, I think you had some, I think your comment about the acute angle is very valid. I can imagine people walking on one sidewalk and then wanting to just, you know, get to the other side and they could walk through the park area, although there is that grade change and that might, that's another issue that might come as a little bit of a surprise to people that are expecting kind of a normal stair height riser. But I, I think what I would suggest, because I really like the geometry of this scheme and I like how everything's very orthogonal and I like how the granite blocks and I would actually say, take that one that's at an angle and make it orthogonal. I think it would be a stronger, stronger design to just kind of keep them all at right angles. It's, it's, it's a really kind of elegant solution I think you've come up with. But instead of, on this view that you see here, instead of that sharp tip at the far left end, I, I would probably just maybe take it at the edge of the tree grate and chamfer the corner and give a little bit of, you know, a bigger sidewalk landing there at, turning the corner. Because I think a curve here, I like how everything kind of set within the sidewalk zone is very angular. So, and I think it's, I think it really is a very elegant solution and it's clear that you have this landscape architecture background. The, I like the granite blocks also. They're rendered as red, but are they actually going to be gray like regular?
Yeah, there'll be matching tone. We didn't specify exactly the color, but it's just, it will be a matching tone. It's not going to be something that will be popping up.
We, we tried to render them red because they kind of blended in when we tried to render them gray. So we wanted people to be able to see them.
Yep. Okay, that's fine. Good to know. I, I just do, and I'm, you know, I've, I do a lot of public projects as well and I, and I understand, you know, reading the letter of the law and the ADA and codes and accessibility and what you have to do and what you don't have to do. But because this is a public outdoor space and you're going to have people able bodied and people not able bodied, I do worry about that drop off. And I'm wondering if I, I just, having the little projected curb, I actually don't think that's even enough for a cane height to understand that you're going to have a drop off.
We could, we can do it either way. We can either do a raised curb that meets the cane height, or we could do effectively at the highest point, it could be two six inch steps down off the other side. And I think either way would work. We'll have to, you know, adjust the, the location of the tree slightly to fit in a couple of steps, but I, yeah, I think that's a detail that, you know, we could work through with PIC and, and the LC staff.
I think the little, the second step would, I think, could be very elegant. And then provide full, you know, while it wouldn't be accessible, at least it would be permeable by, by most people. The other idea is that you could actually just raise it and have it be a continuous seat wall. But that's more expensive, obviously.
We actually, we modeled it and it started really dividing the space and we would kind of, so I don't know if people remember some of our original renderings. We had like a whole raised bed that was pretty tall and then we had a sunken section. And Ming Koo brought up a really good point that the space is kind of too small to do anything massive like that. Like it really, the more we looked at it, it feels like it wants to be more open. So I think instead of dividing the space, I would probably just go the route of the, the two steps down, you know, if that's, if that's a concern. So.
Yeah, I just, I would just hate for this to be something that would have to draw on your professional liability insurance or something, you know? So just, you know, plan, you know, hope for the best, but plan for the worst. So yeah, I think, I think, I think the, the second step would be, would be very elegant, like I say.
Okay.
I wonder with that, that tip there, that sharp tip, if that, I mean, I guess it would, it would, what if that, what if that were like a triangular planter? I wonder how that would look.
I, I still think you're going to have people being frustrated that they can't just cut the corner. You know, it's like the desire, the desire lines are going to be take over, I think. And
Yeah, I, well, we just round it off. I, I think that's a very simple solution.
Well, like I said, well, I, I, well, I, I actually wouldn't round it off. I would, I would just chamfer it off. So yeah, exactly. I, I think that would be, use the geometry that you have with the, the tree grates.
Okay. Done.
Okay. Other commissioners? Oh, I guess, well, I don't know if we can ask, Joe, can we ask about who maintains this? Is that, can we ask that question?
You can ask, of course. I mean, it's outside of our purview, but you can.
I, I understand. We're not going to hold you, you know?
Yeah, but we do, I mean, just to say, we do have three other agenda items, just.
Right. I can be, I can be incredibly quick about it. So we went before the Parks Department about this. They don't want to maintain another park. So very simply, we've already written a condo association agreement that's been approved by PIC where the condo association for the new nine unit building would pay the maintenance fees for the landscaping, both up against building and any maintenance related to the park. This is actually a pretty standard, public-private relationship between the new building and public space. And so PIC is on board with that arrangement.
Okay, thank you, Evan. Appreciate it. Other commissioners have comments? Sorry.
Yeah, Ernest, I, I just made you a co-host again. I think you got dropped off. Yeah, there you are.
Thank you. Uh, yeah. Has all the other commissioners spoken that want to speak on this?
Yeah.
Yeah. So Evan, yeah, it's, it's really interesting how landscape contractors develop into, you know, building contractors and then on to developers. But so I, I have a little bit of a tree background. So not that it, it means that I would like to see trees in pits, but I know trees work better in median strips. So that's another thing you might consider. The other thing that I, I am sort of sensitive about is lighting in urban areas where the heavy leaf that you get from maples and the maintenance on those getting collected. I mean, maples really are heavy. So for tree plantings in those vest pocket parks, which I really love because you can do so many things with them, it's like having locust or ginkgo trees. The, the locust tree, the, the leaves, they disintegrate right away. And even when they're out full, light will get through. So they don't have any deep, heavy shadows. When you use locust or when you use gink, and ginkgos are really tough trees. I mean, like, they were around since prehistoric times and they, they made it, they made it through the
So I'll just jump in. I wouldn't put locust here because they tend to get pretty scraggly and they also buckle sidewalks like nobody's business. Their roots are very strong. And so where we have bluestone pavers here, I don't really want to end up with a completely ripply bluestone in five to 10 years when the roots take. The ginkgos are something we could definitely consider. They, you can get a columnar ginkgo. That's a good idea. The one thing I will say about the columnar ginkgo is they tend to get very dense. And so they don't allow a whole lot of light through them, to your point. The maples do allow a little bit more light. Part of the reasoning around the maples too is that as you go down Kenneworth Street, there's already several maples in the street. You know, and it's kind of keeping with the rest of the street. So.
Yeah. So one of the things about, well, anyway, I was going to ask you about the size of those tree pits, by the way?
I think Ming Koo right now, four by four, yeah. And they're going to be completely permeable. So.
Yeah. Yeah. So that was just my, my only concern. I understand how, you know, the maples or most, a lot of the city street trees are popping up the sidewalks. I wasn't, I did, I was not aware that the locust had a tendency to do that.
Yeah, the locust, it just grows so fast and it also doesn't grow straight. So it tend to lose form pretty quickly. So.
All right. Well, that was the only thing. And I, and I love seeding, being an old guy, being able to walk past the site and sit down, which is a good thing. All right. So I don't know. Are there any other comments other than what's already been said? Oh, and what did you say about lighting again?
For lighting, for lighting, we're going to be required to meet the PIC requirements for lighting. So there is one, if not two street lights that we're going to have to put in as part of this. Those will throw pretty substantial light that should light the park pretty well in the evening. If it is a concern of the group, I don't have any issue putting on a light that's mounted to the building that could cast some light into the center section there. I don't think that would be an issue with either the condo association nor, or the design. So, but street lighting will have to meet requirements as is. So.
Yeah, there are three street lights already on the sites. We will be moving one of them that's on the edge of the existing sidewalk edge. So effectively we'll have one over here, like right next to the building, one over here, and then there will be one somewhere in here. But we need to, we don't have the exact location set up yet. We need to work with a civil engineer and also PIC to define that location. But I, I believe that those three pole lights will have enough lighting to lit the park itself, so it won't be maintained at a dark, as a dark space.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Yeah, just the, the lighting and the tree species that would, you know, sort of help with the maintenance of the space. You know, leaves that disintegrate relatively quickly without having someone to sweep them up, rake them up and haul them away. All right. Anybody else have anything else on this? Thank you, Evan.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we could open it up to, to public comment, but to do that, I will need, if you could stop sharing, I just need to share my screen so I can bring up our, thank you. I'll bring up our.
So Joe, you want to share on, at the end of each presentation? With to the public or did you want to get through the agenda, then have people?
No, no, no. So after each presentation, we'll have public comment and then, and then we'll make a motion.
Okay, sounds good.
Ask for a motion. So I can read this if you can't see it. I'll, I'll just go ahead. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at HighlandACDC@Boston.gov. And I see some hands raised, so I will go to, looks like Joan Seemster first, and you'll have two minutes to make your comment. So Joan, please.
Yeah, and these are comments, these are questions because we've been following this development for the last couple of years. And there's been some things said now that I just wanted to get in alignment about, and they're not in any particular sequence. But in the previous presentation, there were going to be six new on-street parking spots. This time there's four. Can you, so just explain the difference. I'm going to ask all my questions to make sure that they get incorporated into the minutes. And then I'll wait for the answers at the end. There was going to be a slow street plan that will be put into effect for this street. I wanted an update on that plan. And also a traffic, traffic impact study because you're changing, this will change the traffic flow in an area that is pretty highly trafficked. So I heard the reference to emergency vehicle turnaround, but I didn't hear any reference to traffic impact. Previously, there was mention of both a hydrant and a sewer manhole. I heard mention of a hydrant, but no mention of relocation of a sewer manhole in this particular one. I heard mention of, about a crosswalk, crossing, but I don't see it in the design and it was mentioned previously, but it had been incorporated. And we were told that that design would be adapted and I don't see that adaptation. I don't have clarity because previously this was going to be a private initiative. I'd like clarification on who currently owns the property in the city. Is it a BPDA? Is it an MOH? Is it a park? I don't, I don't have clarity on that. And how is it going to be transferred? Who is going to own it? If the HOA is maintaining it, that's the private part. What is it? A lease with a buyback? I'm not clear about what new rate, because this is a new arrangement. And so what is that new arrangement? And how are we putting public artwork on a privately owned space? I'm not sure. I don't understand. So if somebody could explain that arrangement, I think those are the my questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And you're just at two minutes. A, a lot of those questions are outside of the purview of the commission, but I think probably the most germane is about the ownership. So if you could have a quick, just recap of the ownership, which I believe you have.
I'll, I wrote these all down. So six spots, so there are still six spots being generated. Four of them are being generated by this park. The other two are being generated around the thirty-nine forty-five Dudley Street site because we're closing up a very wide curb cut that currently prevents two cars from parking there. So this whole project does generate six spots. So that hasn't changed. Slow street plan, you'll have to talk to PIC and the city about that. I have no control and nothing to do with that. Traffic plan, I mentioned before, it's already being done with PIC, the Public Improvement Commission and BTD, that's being covered. There is not a need for a traffic study because there's no change in the amount of traffic. The only thing that needs to be done is with, in conjunction with a civil engineer, turning radiuses have to meet city requirements, which they currently do. Last ownership, this is owned by Boston Transportation. It will still be owned by Boston Transportation. And it will be maintained by the condo association. There is no change indeed. There's no change in ownership. Currently public land. It will stay public land. I think that's it.
Great, thank you. We'll move next to DBHOM. If we could have your full name, you'll have two minutes to make your comment. Again, that's DBHOM. You should be able to unmute yourself and make your comment.
Hi, my name's not DBHOM. I've been trying to change it. It's actually David Black.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
I don't know how to change it. But anyway, not, not to use time on that. I, I missed part of your presentation, Evan. I'm sorry I came in part of the way through. And a comment just about that, it'd be really helpful, Joe, if we could have a site plan in view when the commissioners are talking about it and people are asking questions. You know, it's just a little bit difficult to follow sometimes when, when, when the discussion is going on. You know, it's just a little bit difficult to follow sometimes when, when, when the discussion is going on. Um, my question really is about, um, pedestrian and the pedestrian crossings. Um, Evan, I, I expressed, you know, um, my feeling that that's a very important aspect of this. Um, have you been working with, um? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, if I can just ask my questions and then get you to respond. Um, situations like this are very difficult because, um, you know, uh, these sort of intersections. People walk in all directions, um, and I, I could see now what, where the crosswalks are. Um, so I think it looks as if this has been, has been thought through, um, and I thank you. Um, I, in, one of the commissioners was, was asking something about, uh, you know, pedestrians bumping into things. Um, or taking shortcuts. We know that in the design of the testing facilities, uh, the golden rule is it has to be convenient to be safe. Um, and hopefully that principle will be followed through. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Black. We'll move to Lee Peters next. Lee, you'll have two minutes to make your comment, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Joe. Um, Lee Peters, sixty-one Dudley Street, uh, twenty-seven. Meant the loss of a significant tree with a much larger canopy than the new trees in the proposal. So I was gonna ask for the team to consider requiring one of those trees to be of a large canopy. And then the others can stay as they are. That's my comment, thank you.
Okay, we will move to Christopher Grant, you will have two minutes to make your comment, you should be able to mute yourself.
Hi, um, this is Chris Grant from thirteen Dudley Street, um. Couple of houses up from this area. Um, I just have a question in terms of the seating I see inside of the renderings. Um, they don't look very comfortable. I'm wondering, um, if it's possible that, um, there could be some that have some back support. You know, a lot of people in the area got back problems and, you know, would like to sit down and just hang out there. Seems like a very nice design, so, um, it looks like something that I, I may wanna sit down in, but I don't know if I wanna sit down on. The, the square boxes that I see. Um, all right, so I'm just putting that out there.
Great, thank you, sir, thank you for your comment. And with that, I'm just going to check our emails, I think that's probably the end of public comment. Check here. Yeah, Ernest, that's the end of public comment.
Okay, thank you very much, Joe. Uh, so we move now to the next agenda item?
No, 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 someone will need to, um, hopefully we can entertain a motion.
Moving too fast here. Uh, the chair will now entertain a motion, uh.
I, I would, um, I, I think we're, this project is moving in the right direction. I, I would like to entertain. Uh, a motion for a continuance, uh, to, to, you know, with some provisos to see some of the changes that we had spoke about. And then just see this project, you know, briefly once more. Um, and I can outline those provisos, uh, if, if, if I, if I have any support for that.
Sure, go for it.
Um, I would like to, uh, the following provisos. Uh, the first proviso would be to round, or sorry, chamfer the triangle. Uh, the proviso that we mix in maybe three, um, iron. Um, benches or, you know, metal benches. Um. The proviso that we put some granite bollards, uh, kind of at near the nose of that. Um. Park, you know, where, where, where the existing radius, yeah, yeah. Uh, well, no further out, maybe, you know, towards the front of that radius where the existing radius is, just to protect the space. Uh, protect perhaps the, uh, fire hydrant and also the proviso. That, um, we add some granite, six inch or four inch granite curve around the plant, the planting, the planting. All the planting beds. And the proviso that if the city changes this design, that they, this design circles back to the commission. And the proviso that. Um, that the, that staff review this project. Uh. Uh, as it's being built, uh, to make sure that the design is in conformance with. With the, um, with the, with the, what we've been presented here.
So Andrew, just to confirm, you're, you're expecting them to come back next month?
Yeah, yes, yeah, ju- just for these minor changes.
Can I make a, can I make a request? Do you mind? Uh, I, I would just request that, um, I don't have any issue with, um. Anything that's been raised, um, except I would question the granite around the planting beds. Um, I would request that we get an approval, uh, and remand this to the BLC staff.
I think, I think, Evan, I think Evan, you're out of order. I mean, it's, it's up to the commissions to me.
Okay, well, and they can confirm that we've made the changes that have been requested.
So there's a motion, there's a motion on the floor. Um, I think, Andrew, one thing, um. Commissioner Ward Hyatt did mention adding a step.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, can we also, I'm, I, I apologize, it's a lot of provisos, I know. Um, thank you for your quick, um, note-taking, Joe. Yes, with also the proviso. Uh, as Commissioner Ward Hyatt mentioned with, with this, with the step, yes.
Great, is there a second?
Is anybody else out there? Angela?
Uh, well, I, I actually was going to suggest what Evan suggested of, of basically. Pointing out these things that the commission would like to see, but having the details. Remanded to staff because I think it's well within their abilities. Um, and if something was not possible or was presenting a problem, that you would come back. But only if something seemed not possible.
Uh, Joe, how does that go with the emotion that's on the floor now? Andrew?
Well, it'd be, it'd be up to Andrew to accept that amend, as an amendment.
If, uh, yeah, uh, if, if, uh, Commissioner Ward Hyatt is, is accepting the provisos as mentioned. Then I'm, I'm willing to remand all those changes to staff.
Rather than a continuance, okay.
Correct.
And, and, and again, if, if something does come up, staff is more than happy to bring it back to the commission if something changes drastically.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm worried about, you know, what if, you know, the city did, forgot something and they wanna alter this radically. Like, I, I would like to see it again, you know, one last time. Uh, but, but, yeah, the, the provisos I mentioned, we can, uh, approve it now. With those provisos and, and remand those changes to staff oversight. I'm, I'm accepting that, if that's the case.
Are there any other comments from any of the other commissioners?
I, I would just say that, um, I'm not sure I'm, I'm in full agreement, maybe because I just don't understand the curbing around the planters. As, as I think Evan was also, uh, unsure if that was the right direction. Um, I've seen plenty of conditions where there's flush. You know, the, the plant, the, the, the grading is flush with, and I think it would be less of a trip, it just, I think it's just. An easier design, so, um, I, I guess I would just also, um, I would not make that as a proviso. But just, uh, something to, to confirm and, and. Sure that it's, yeah, to explore, yeah.
Okay, I'm willing to accept the removal of the curbs around the planting beds near the intersection there.
So, uh, Joe, or Andrew, which one of you would restate the? Yeah, that needs to be restated.
Sure, sure, so I think, oh, oh, go ahead, Andrew.
No, I was gonna ask you if you could repeat them minus.
I, I think I have them, so we're, um.
Minus the curve, the planting beds nearest to the intersection.
So we have a approval with the proviso, um, we're going to transfer, chamfer the edge of the. Uh, of the park, um, we're going to, um, hopefully mix in. About three iron benches if possible, we're going to add granite bollards at the nose of the park. Um, we're going to explore the addition of granite curbing, um. And we'll return to the, to the commission, um. All details remanded to staff and staff can return to the commission, um, and staff will monitor, uh, the project throughout construction.
Does that sound right to you, Andrew?
Well, yeah, the, the step that, uh, Commissioner Ward Hyatt mentioned.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, and, and the, uh, should we say, um, exploring the addition of a step at the east, I guess it's the.
The Dudley Street side.
Yeah, Dudley Street, sorry, north side.
Dudley Street side, yes.
Does that sound good to you, Commissioner Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
I think you got it all, Joe.
All right, so I think we have a first by Andrew and then Angela, will you second?
I will second, yes.
That's what I thought I heard. Okay, good.
Yeah, all right, all right, so I will do, uh, a, a roll call vote, so, uh, Commissioner Shelburne?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Costin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Samaha.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Got it, four for four.
Thanks, okay, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, Evan, and we'll, we'll be in touch. We have a lot of work ahead of us.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
You, you, you leaving, leaving us here?
So we're gonna go to, uh.
Have fun.
Our next, uh.
All right, what's next on the agenda now, Joe?
Yep, we have, uh, sixty-nine Center Street, so this was continued from last month, it's the construction of a.
Oh, yeah.
Three addition to existing two-story house, and I believe we have Michael Chavez here, Michael, are you here?
I'm here.
Ready to go?
Yes.
All right.
Andrew, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I just a quick comment, Mi- Michael, um, uh, if, if you could just, um. Comment on the, the changes that you made only, um, I think we're all, you know, we all, uh. Listened with great intent to your presentation last time, which was, which was very good, and I. Don't know if we need to go over all that again, just the changes, so that, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, Mr. Cornish reminded me last week to keep it to ten minutes and just show the before and afters kind of thing, so that's what I'll, exactly what I'll do, and then I can open up the questions.
All right, Michael. All right, and Joe is counting.
Yep, go ahead, Michael. Uh, do you wanna, do you wanna share your screen, Michael?
Sure, yeah, um.
I'm gonna stop sharing and then you will be all set.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll just give my, uh, my staff recommendation, which is. Uh, let's see, staff recommends approval with provisos, finding that the areas of the building proposed for demolition or either later additions. Are significantly altered early features and their removal will not have a negative impact on historic character of this building or the district. The proposed new addition is appropriately set back from the street and reads as a distinct new addition. Final design documents at seventy-five percent completion or higher are managed to staff for final approval. With the option of returning to the commission if staff feels appropriate. So, Michael, it's all yours.
Okay. Uh, so, just as a quick reminder, this is, uh, we're putting residential single, a two-story addition on this existing single-family home. Uh, the home will remain a single family and we're just increasing its square footage, uh, for the house here, so. Project goals generally aging in place and generational living, stroke restoration, thoughtful regenerative landscape design and climate resiliency. Uh, so the main explorations and revisions that we did for this month, uh, it was the building massing and mainly the roof. Uh, we, we, we explored siding and colors, uh, that was, uh, mentioned last time. And suggested that we explore a little bit more as well as more information on the landscape and site design. Uh, and so what we've done essentially is a series of, the, the larger photo that you'll see in the next several slides. Are as the, the revised image from what was there before. Uh, and so I'll just kind of go through what those changes were, uh, overall, so. Uh, the, I'll start with just the roof, so the, the building that you see here on the top is the existing building and then this is the addition on the bottom. And, uh, previously essentially we had kind of a hard line between the old and new, and so what we've done is brought the lower roof in. As a kind of, not a small, not a dormer, but kind of brought it in a little bit like a dormer to the existing roof here, uh, while keeping the, the taller roof separate. Um, and so the elevation view of that, again, this is the previous version on the, on the kind of bottom left corner. And the proposed, uh, revision on the right. We've done a couple of things, uh, number one, we brought the taller roof down just a little bit, so it's suddenly below the existing ridge. And we've also kind of, I won't say flattened out, but kind of lowered the angle of this lower roof here, so you can see there's less. Roof visible from the street side and also continued that roof around the back there, so this is the section that ties into the existing roof. But it still gives us that bit of separation that we were looking for and we like that, that view of that. Um, and so that's gonna kept, we simplified the windows that we talked about last time as well on the addition. Kept the original details, of course, and everything else on the existing home here as well. And, um, let's see, you can kind of see that, that difference here, we're not trying to replicate what's happening on the existing house facade on the addition on this side. We did however leave the siding vertical on the upper, on the second floor, we just, we'd like that look a little better versus turning it sideways and having it be either a, uh. You know, say a four inch, um, horizontal or versus like a six maybe at the bottom, um, so we kept that. Uh, vertical siding on this, on this part of the addition. Uh, if you look at it from the side where the driveway is here, again, this, this has been brought down and lowered below this. So you can see that this whole, you know, section of the addition here has been brought down and lowered. And again, we essentially tied in the cornices all the way around the house, so this was already at the same, uh, height. As the existing side of the, you know, the bottom of this roof here, did the same thing on the back end here, so you can see that we had this roof extended a little bit further. To try and cover up some of this section, so we kind of did a mix of pulling this back a little bit and extending the, the, this portion out so that it's nice and. Uh, squared off here and also provides a nice clean valley for the roof on this back corner on this side. Um, and then again, the, the entry door was simplified as well here with the arning. Uh, and so again, if you can see from the rear, this, uh, section of roof was just kind of brought down, a little bit of a ridge there to kind of clean up that corner in the back. Um, which is here and also lowered down the back. By doing that, we also, you can see that there was a couple different, although the windows had the same header height here, they were kind of different from each other along with the door. And they kind of got cleaned up by tying it in together with this same header height along with the door on the back. And then this, uh, you know, ridge along the back here is all now the same, but this roof continued all the way around here. Uh, and then on the other side, which is the one against the taller building next to it, uh, the, the only real change here was that we just. Uh, originally we were showing some kind of similar corner that was here, that's on the front now to the side trim. We just put a simple piece of trim on that corner, I suggested. Um, a couple updated then, three D views, uh, I think before I had some three D views that were slightly different than the elevation, so now this is all about the same. So this is just the three D views without any of the vegetation on the site.
Because they were ten for, for four dollars.
Just a good idea of the, um, the massing that's there as well as how the roof is interacting, uh, the old roof and the new roof together here. Um, so, you know, clean valley on the back now, a lot better for snow and water. Again, this has been flattened out a little bit, so it's a little bit subtler and this roof has been, again, it feels a little bit lower compared to what it was last time as well. Um. And then regarding site design, uh, we wanted more clarity on which trees were being removed and then what we were placing them with. Uh, so there are five trees in total that are being removed, uh, that have, you know, more than, I think, what was it, a six inch?
Caliper maybe?
Eight inch.
Eight inch, right. Uh, so there's these five here, all of these are Norway maples, which are not considered native and, and, and in the site. This one at the, in, in this section here is the one that's being impacted by the, the addition. Um, we brought on a horticulturist to take a look at the, you know, what's there now and talk about some of the, the site, you know, impacts. And he's basically saying, if you're gonna do this, do it, you know, all the way essentially is kind of what his suggestion was. You know, he felt that Norway maples, you know, he, I was quoting, he's like, they're kind of like Wonder Bread, they have a lot of, you know, substance, but not a lot of nutritional value. Uh, so he said, so if you wanna bring in some proper natives and, and bring some more, uh, you know. You know, trees in and things like that, that'll help diversify the site and really play a larger role in the, you know, wildlife corridor that's running through this particular neighborhood. And then kind of go, go with it.
Yeah, what size of that tree, I'm sorry, what size is the tree you're taking down, you think, are you considering?
There's a mixture between twelve, twelve to sixteen inches, it looks like. Or this one's ten in the back, so between ten and sixteen inches, depending on which tree, there's, there's five trees we're taking out. Um, all of those being those Norway maple, so these three in the back here, and then there's one here in the, in the middle where the addition's going, and then one up at the front corner. Um, that's, that's there now as well.
And you replaced it with what again?
So we're gonna be replacing them with a number of different trees. Well, I, we're gonna figure out what the caliper is, I'm not sure exactly what the size of the caliper is that we'll replace them with, we're gonna try and get them as big as we can, as we can afford. Um, but the types of trees that we will be replacing them with is a mixture of uh, striped maple. We're gonna put one up in the front corner and then one in the back. Um, you heard from Evan earlier that he has more of a conical maple. Uh, this one's a little bit bigger. It's gonna have, you know, similar size to the Norway maple that's there now. Uh, but it is also, uh, more hardy for the New England area and it has a little bit more of that larger canopy. Uh, so that'll be up on that front corner, uh, where the other Norway maple is currently. Uh, and then we're gonna be, there's also a couple of trees that are on site that we're gonna be just moving, uh, to a different location. Uh, so we have, there's an existing magnolia and an existing pagoda dogwood that are gonna be relocated uh, on onsite to be better, in better spots for what their shade and sun needs are. Um, and then we also will be, uh, putting in, move my, our here, uh, magnolia tree, oh no, uh, so two more dogwoods. We will be adding another, uh, striped maple, eastern red bud and silver balm. Um, trees in different locations. And so this, uh, legend here just describes where those will be located according to the site. Um, and then we'll also have a couple of rain gardens that will include things like milkweed and little blue stem, this type of grass. Black-eyed Susans, things that enjoy being saturated with water from time to time, but also are very good pollinator plants, um, and can help, you know, kind of filter water as it as it comes off the roof. Um, and then the site in the back will actually, we had a fish pond originally designed in there. We kept that, but the, you know, the horticulturists are saying that having a stream feature, you know, it's gonna be, you know, upkeep by Bruce, but having a stream feature there also helps reduce the risk of having things like mosquitoes and other types of things that you don't want in sitting waters. So having water that's moving is is positive for, um, reducing, you know, pests that you don't want in a water situation. And also provides different opportunities for different kinds of wildlife to use water, whether it's a pond or, you know, a moving water like a stream, uh, as well as having an acoustic, uh, value to it. Um, and then a kind of the rest of it will essentially be a mixture of, uh, uh, like a native meadow kind of understory that you might find, um, in in kind of natural settings. And so that's the general overall planting there. So I'll pause there. I think that's probably close to ten minutes. I don't know. Um, and then if I'm happy to then jump back anywhere we want in this to, for questions.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
Uh, no, no questions. I, I think Michael did a great job of incorporating all the comments and the provisos we made at the last meeting. So thi- this looks good. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm curious to hear what other commissioners have to say.
Same here.
Uh, I, I do have some questions and I agree, um, the, 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 the changes are, I think, generally very positive. Um, I, I just have some questions about the existing building, um, that is unclear at look, from looking at the drawings. Um, are you repairing or replacing the windows?
Placing the windows.
Replacing. And are they replacement windows, i.e. they are going to be basically smaller than the opening and everything is gonna be smaller? Or are you basically taking it out to the jam framing and putting in a new window?
Correct. We'll say, we'll be taking it out to the rough, it's existing, right, inside and keeping all of our, uh, trim on the outside as is.
Okay, great. I like to hear that. Um, as far as the attic window goes, if you go to the front elevation, um, the existing window is an arch top, but your trim is squared off. I'm a little confused by that, um, the window, yeah.
Uh, I can update that. I don't know why that's rendered that way. Let me see again. Uh, I'm not sure. We'll update that. That's.
Okay, it's not, it's not really, it's not meant to be.
This will stay as it is, correct.
Okay, cool. Um, and can you confirm you are keeping the coins, that is the rustication at the vertical edges and the dental work that's going up in the gable and
Yeah.
under the eve and all that. You're keeping.
Yeah, all this dental molding will stay, all the existing.
Right.
And one of the comments, by the way, that I make earlier, you had mentioned the last month about the, the potential of having two different colors, uh, kind of a lighter version of the palette that we're using for the addition and the existing here. I think one of the things that we talked about was we, we want to do that little bit of a deeper dive on whether we can keep the siding here versus replacing it. And so I think that may make a decision on, on whether we do that or not. If we keep, if we're able to keep this, if it's still in good enough shape, uh, then I think that we can probably pursue that potentially because it's hard to match exactly, uh, you know, a hardy type of board with, you know, an existing condition of especially paint. And so if we do that, then we may have that slight separation and make that work both visually as well as long-term upkeep for future painting of this, because it's, you know, it's a wooden siding. Uh, so if we do that, or if we replace all of it, we find that this is all right and just in poor shape, we may then end up just keeping it the same across the board.
You, you might, uh, let, just from my own experience, you might be pleasantly surprised at the great quality of those clabberds.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I think it's gonna be in good shape. Honestly, I think the corners where it's some of the windows situations, we might have some, you know, fixing to do there, but I think you're right. I think this side, okay, so we'll, I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, that's good. Uh, as far, one more thing about the attic window. So since it is a, a new window, you're gonna replicate the muntens in that. With not, they're not gonna be like a snap-in grid. They're gonna be.
Yeah, you can, I think Pella and other companies make.
Yeah, an architectural series.
Right, exactly, correct.
Okay, and then just one more detail about the drawings. Um, the bay, the, the three-arched bay at the first floor is, um, the wood around that, the siding around that is like a flatboard. It's different than the rest of the body. And I think that's really distinctive. Um, so a both above the arches and below, it's flatboard similar to what you see in the inset of the coins. And it's hard to see in that photo, but I have a photo on my phone since I'm a fan of the house. Um, yeah, I have a photo showing the flatboard. So I just want to make sure that you pay attention to that. And when you're, um, when you're restoring that facade, I think it would be, um, the, the appropriate thing to do is to keep that flatboard aesthetic, because it really sets it out as something that's like a little jewel box set out from the rest of the house.
Understood. Not a problem.
Um, yeah, I think, you know, I have just personally some, you know, I'm not, I, I, I would, I would do the addition a little bit differently, but I, um, given our purview and what we're trying to do here, I, um, think that, um, that you've basically, um, addressed our concerns from the previous hearing and, um, and the answers that you've just given me, um, are, are, make me feel like this will be a good project. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other commissioners? Please? So Joe, do we open it up now to others? Or do we make a motion?
We can, uh, we'll open up the public comment. So if you can, um, Michael, stop sharing your screen. I will share mine so I can get to the.
Disclaimer.
Yep.
I don't know if it's really a disclaimer.
Script.
The script, right.
All right. That up. And I, I'm happy to read that. So.
Thank you.
Just get it here. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at Highland AC DC at Boston dot gov. So, um, you will have two minutes each to make your, um, comments and we will start with Joan Seamster. So Joan, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Joan.
Hey, thank you, Ernest. Hi, um, this is a comment that came from the HPNC presentations that we sat through and is echoed in the questions that Angela had. Um, the previous presentation showed that the front of the building was all gonna be done in dark colors and there wouldn't be any variation that would reveal the, the detail that Angela wanted to call out. And there was no discussion of that in this presentation. So I just wanted to confirm, um, that whatever the front of this building does, um, end up being that it has enough, um, variance between the detail and the center part of the front of the house. I don't have a technical term for it, that that's not my space, um, that it articulates all the detail that is there now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I might answer that. So I think the question is about the, the color and ensuring that it doesn't kind of drown out, I guess you could say, the detail that's there on the, on the facade, is that correct? Is that?
Yes.
I, I don't think we have any purview over color though. On, I mean, I think I had given my comments in just, uh, some friendly advice, but it's, I don't think we have purview over color.
So, yeah, and even though there's no purview, I'll just say that, yes, we're gonna pay very close attention to, you know, the details of this house. And we do want to keep this house, uh, as beautiful as, as possible from the street. You know, we know that the colors now are definitely make it what it is. And so we want to be able to tie it into the new addition while at the same time ensuring that it's got those details, um, you know, an enjoyable aesthetic from the street.
Oh, sorry, I used the wrong word. Um, I don't mean color as in paint chip. I mean, color as in allowing for definition, which is in the purview, which is maintaining the current visual impact of the front of the house. And that is in the purview and that's, um, that's what I was talking about. And I, and I'm hearing, Michael, that the answer is there'll be enough contrast so that the current detail will continue to be visible.
That's correct. Yes, right.
Thank you.
In earnest, I'm not seeing any more public comments. So I think we can close public comment and, and ask if someone, a commissioner is ready to make a motion.
All right, I, I just wondered, were there any other commissioners wanted to make any comments? And there's no more public comment, you say, Joe?
No hands? That's the end of public comment.
All right, so, um, the chair will now entertain a motion.
Uh, I, I just have a quick question for Joe or I guess, uh, an ask. Joe, can you, can you reread those, uh, provisos in the staff notes, please, for this project?
Sure.
Just I, it was a.
Yeah, uh, staff recommends approval with provisos, finding that they, oh, yeah, I'm not, okay. Finding that the areas of the building proposed for demolition are either later additions or significantly altered early features. And their removal will not have a negative impact on the historic character of the building or the district. The proposed new addition is appropriately setback from the street and reads as distinct new addition. Final design documents at seventy-five percent completion or higher are amended to staff for final approval with the option of returning to the commission if staff feels appropriate.
Okay, um, motion, motion to approve the project with the provisos as Joe has stated, with the additional proviso that staff also, uh, um, you know, oversee the, or not oversee, um, review the, the garden in progress as it's constructed.
I'm not gonna ask you to repeat that. Uh, somebody second that, that motion, please? One of the commissioners?
Um, I'll, I'll second it. I just, I, I, yeah, I don't want to put too much burden on staff to do basically construction observation, um, because that's, I feel like that's, uh, uh, a little outside the.
Purview?
The purview, but, um,
I can explain.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So, uh, I, I, I listen in on a lot of other, um, historic, um, commissions and where, where Joe is involved and joy, Joe is, is, uh, deployed in all sorts of ways. Uh, and I think given his, you know, he has a degree in historic preservation and his knowledge, I think that any time that we can deploy him where he's not acting in a burdensome way, he's, he's acting in an advisory role. I think the district would benefit from deploying him as, as much as possible.
So Andrew, are you saying that we're underusing Joe?
Yes, absolutely. We are underusing him. No, I, I see him, he is, I can give examples. I don't want to hold the commission's time, but
Well, it's waste Joe then.
Well, I mean, I will just say, you know, we, we, we have a, you know, we, we have a, a landscape plan in front of us and it, as that develops further, staff will be involved.
Okay.
You staff will oversee that. I mean, and that would be understood. You know, I mean, anything that changes from that landscape plan has to come to staff. And then if I'm not comfortable with it, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Well, and I'll, and I'll offer this too, if, if it's helpful. One, one thing that we're being very, uh, you know, thoughtful about is, is what happens during construction, because it's a tight site. And, you know, our horticulturists, for example, were saying that at chest height, depending on what the, the caliber are of existing building, trees that you're leaving on site, each inch equals at least a foot of root ball that you need to stick around. Some of these trees have sixteen feet of radius, you know, or diameter that they need to be able to, you know, not have trucks driving on top of it, things like that. So one of the things we are working on is a landscape, uh, kind of construction plan essentially as to where you go, where we're gonna stage things, put things where vehicles can or can't be and how we maintain that, because we don't want trees dying two years later because the soil was compacted above it during construction. And so, uh, I'm just gonna offer the, where I'm happy to share that plan with you as part of our landscape plan during that seventy-five percent some metal. So you could just at least have that. And it could just be useful for the future. And people are proposing to keep things on site. It could be, you know, a way for, you know, folks to kind of see what we're, you know, what we're doing, because we are gonna be very, very careful about this. And then, and something that Bruce is very, you know, he wants to keep his plants and he wants to keep them, you know, done right.
Michael, thank, thank you very much. Um, so I'm assuming, not assuming, but what I'm hearing is that, uh, the motion that Andrew forwarded, that's been seconded with by, um, Angela, um.
And I, I can do a roll call vote, Ernest, if you'd like me to.
Yes, a vote will be taken now by Joe.
Okay, Commissioner Shelburne.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt.
Yes.
Commissioner Costin.
Yes.
And Commissioner Samaha.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
Appreciate it.
Working with you more on this.
Mr. Chow, good presentation.
Thank you.
I know Bruce is happy with you. Uh, we're now joined with the agenda.
Yeah, we're gonna be moving to three Cedar Square and Commissioner Shelburne has recused himself. So Andrew, as soon as we finish this, I will text you or you're, you're, you're more than welcome. As long as you keep your, um, camera off and your microphone off, um.
Think, uh, should he not be able to sit in? I think, is he still within the three hundred feet? I think he's outside of that.
Yeah, but he already recused himself.
He already, oh, already.
And we have three commissioners. So we have Commissioner Ward Hyatt, Samaha and Costin. So.
Early enough. Okay, let's move forward then.
All right. So three Cedar Square, construct new residential building on a vacant lot. And I think, um, Matt, are you here, Echol? Make sure he.
I am, yes. Good evening.
Uh, great. Matt, is there anyone else that, um, will be presenting with you?
Uh, yes, Eric Zacherson, the project architect.
We need to find him. And then, would you like to share your screen?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, and then before we proceed, I will just read my staff comments. Um, let's see here. So three Cedar Square. The applicant presented to the commission on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three for an advisory review of the project. At that time, commissioners inquired about the existing trees and requested clarity on the landscaping plans with attention to the existing retaining wall. They expressed that the proposed new construction was too dominant over the abutting structure at one Cedar Square and that a more sensitive setback and massing be explored. They also suggested relocating the proposed garage door to not be on the facade of the building. And staff recommends continuing the review of this application, finding that while the height of the building has been reduced by one story, the applicant has not increased the setback or relocated the proposed garage door as suggested by the commission in twenty twenty-three. The applicant should explore increasing the setback from the street and or increasing landscaping of the front facade to maintain the character of the existing green space of this area. The applicant should also explore relocating the garage door to the side of the building. The applicant should further explore the addition of bays as shown in the last two pages of the presentation, which relate to the design of other residential buildings in the district. And I, I'll just show you and Matt, you can elaborate more on that, but this was, uh, let's see, these renderings. let's see, these renderings here that show these bays, I thought were moving in a good direction from what we saw in the beginning of the presentation. So I'm stop stopping my sharing and turning it over to you and Zach.
Great, thank you. Let me let me know when you can see my screen, please.
Yep, yep, we can see it.
Agreed.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us tonight. Once again, my name is Matt Echol. I'm an attorney with Fletcher Tilton here on behalf of this project. Joining me Eric Zacherson, the project architect. Just to give a little bit of brief background in addition to what Mr. Cornish put into the record, we have been at this project for a couple of years at this point, going back about two, yeah, just about two years. Had a very lengthy and productive community process going through both the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition, as well as a Butters meeting and the advisory meeting Mr. Cornish mentioned. We did make a number of changes throughout the process, including some of the changes referenced. We we significantly reduced the house, the the size of this structure. I think we actually reduced it by two stories at one point, but maybe it was only one from the advisory hearing itself. We did explore trying to move the garage. There really is no way to do it. It is, it's not an exceptionally narrow site, but based upon the topography and keeping as much of this retaining wall and just making the whole site work, it does work best coming in straight on. I would note not to necessarily dispute the review of the the two proposals, but we did take to heart the comments relating to increasing the setback, and we did. We actually have a over fifteen-foot front setback, and that's based upon the commission's prior comments relating to that setback. We came last time with about a five-foot setback to have a slightly larger backyard, and in working with the commission, we did push that back about ten feet. And some of the comments from the commissioners at that time were that we have the park right across the street. There's a lot of nice open space there for the residents. There was also a a nice connectivity of having that larger front yard with the park. So we did push that back, and we actually directly align with one Cedar Square now, which was another request for really two reasons. One, that kind of street wall continuity, but also to not block the view coming up Juniper Street, looking back towards one Cedar Square. The final thing that let us do, actually, and potentially most importantly, is keep the front trees and keep the wall as is outside of where we have to take down a few pieces to allow entry both for vehicles and pedestrians. So we did take a lot of that feedback to heart. We did move the building back. We are keeping the trees in the front and keeping that street wall continuity and the view from the street. We did receive ZBA approval for this. It is a nine-unit building with eight parking spaces, and this was filed before the change to the inclusionary zoning policy. So we weren't required to have an affordable unit, but it does have one ground level affordable unit just for the commission's background. So with that, I'm going to go through a brief presentation and then turn it over to Eric for some of the architectural details, and then we look forward to any comments. So just a little bit more background on the site. This is the BPDA's zoning viewer map. For some context, you can see here, we we do front right in the park. Cedar Square is this street that connects Thornton and Juniper Street. It currently just has the one home at one Cedar Square on it, and we're proposing the second building. Excuse me, just an aerial view to give more context to the surrounding area and some of the surrounding buildings. We really took to heart trying to incorporate a number of different architectural and historic aspects of some of the the architecture around us rather than mimicking, you know, one single structure. So we'll get into that as we go further, but we just felt this was a good way to kind of give some context to the site and and some of the architectural features we incorporated. This is just a view looking up from Cedar Street, looking up Juniper Street, so the site is here through the trees. And then looking up Cedar Square with the site on the right. And then looking back towards it. So we're now proposing to keep this tree here. There's another tree here we're proposing to keep. And then this tree line over to the left, we'd be keeping as well, and that's all being allowed by pushing the building back again at the commission's suggestion. Here's a site plan. Shows the outline of the building as well as a few of the trees, but there's a better landscape plan here. Here you can see the fifteen-plus-foot setback. It's just about fifteen and a half feet, and you can see how we align with one Cedar Square, again, to keep that kind of visual connection from Juniper Street and to not overwhelm the building. You can see we have assortment of plantings right in front of the building, a grass area in between the building and the street, and you can see the trees that we're proposing to keep here in the front right corner, as well as along the front and left portion of the the property. We are proposing to put about four trees in the rear to add to a greater tree canopy back there. These are the elevations. You saw this picture on the cover page, but you can see a few more details. We would be opening up this wall here where necessary to get the cars and people into the building, but keeping as much as we can, other than that, to keep that historical retaining wall. You can see the right elevation, excuse me, yes, right elevations here from front to back. You can see the the decks is proposed in the rear to give some private open space to the residents. A little bit better view here with the rear elevations and left elevations. And then a blown-up version again of the Cedar Square elevation looking from front of the building. We were asked to produce this, I believe, through the Neighborhood Coalition, just to give an idea of what this would look like from Thornton. So it is a deeper building than one Cedar Square, but the reduction in height actually makes us either on par and and level with one Cedar Square or towards the front of the building. We're actually shorter based upon the reduction in height and also the natural topography, which runs from left to right on Cedar Square. This is the Cedar Square Street context. Again, you can see the reduction in height now leads to this kind of natural step down from one Cedar to us and then to the garage at twenty-two Juniper. You can see the significant slope in topography from left to right here. So we we feel this is a nice step-down approach, having the the two and a half-story building that on one side kind of disappears into the natural earth and then is a little bit more exposed as the topography goes down. At this point, I will welcome Eric Zacherson. Anything, Eric, you want to add to this slide? You certainly can, and then I'll let you do your thing on the next slide with some of the architectural context.
No, thank you, Matt. Yeah, I appreciate that. If you want to flip to the next slide, I think we can kind of focus on some of the detailing. I think that questions of scale are are addressed there. So this is the the elevation that we are proposing currently that that we landed on after review of some of the comments from this commission from the neighborhood and really visiting, you know, really looking at the context of a lot of the the buildings around and and trying to not mimic any particular one or any particular style or era, but draw on some of the better or draw on some of the details, not necessarily the better or the best ones, but a a number of them that we could bring together to in in a way that makes this building really try and be contextual, really try and fit in with with buildings that are clearly much, much older and have been here, have been members of the the fabric for longer. So as you can see, we have have adjusted detailing at pretty much everywhere around on the facade at the kind of window top caps and at the trims at the cornice line to draw on a number of different features we from from literally buildings that we could walk to, you know, have a short walk from here. Windows we're showing is two over one with with that standard four-inch trim on the sides and, you know, a row of square dentals across the top on the cornice line, trying to build up a detailed facade and and make this a very visually interesting, charming building that that while, you know, three stories and sizable, doesn't feel bland or, you know, doesn't try and feel large, but tries to feel at that very human scale. We could go through each of these individually, but I think the imagery really does a great job of just just showing some of the influences that we were were mimicking, echoing, and building on as we kind of look through and look around the building. So I want to open it up to thoughts, comments, but also just show that we were really trying to respect the comments, both of this this group as well as the neighbors, new Butters, in our in our other meetings as we rework this facade to to try and really actually fit in and draw on the best of this neighborhood.
Thanks, Eric. Now, so with that, Mr. Cornish, I think that concludes our presentation. We'd happily take any questions or comments.
Sure, Ernest, do you want to open it up?
Sure. Well, first, I like to recognize the effort that you guys have put into doing this. I mean, I'm I'm sorry to hear that you couldn't make the the garage thing work on the side the way it would have been kind of nice to look at. My question, I forget, how, what's the space, the square footage on the site?
The site itself, I apologize, let me pull that up. It's seven thousand square feet.
Seven thousand square feet, and you're putting in nine units, you said?
Correct.
Right. It also escapes me. What's the square footage about of those units? My math is not. Nine units, seven thousand square feet.
They they range, we have one studio on the ground level and then eight hundred and twenty-five square foot, two beds on the floors above.
Got you, got you. All right. I mean, it's a little bit out of our purview anyway, but just you know, just to get a sense. And the garage on the side, you're not part, that's not part of your project, or you don't, you guys don't own that, right?
Twenty-two Juniper, no.
Okay, got it, got it. All right. So any questions from any of the other commissioners or comments?
Well, of course I have some.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I I I just want to say I I I appreciate the the work that you've done on this. I wasn't around in this commission when you first came to it, but I I think the the bays that you've integrated into the the facade, the front facade are are a positive development. It just it gives some relief. It's clear that you're looking at buildings in the neighborhood and 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 not not replicating them, but just picking up on what makes them special. Is the wall that I'm seeing that looks like a concrete block wall? That's a new wall on this facade that you have up?
No, it's existing on the site.
It's existing, retaining. I'm I'm just looking at the site plan. I have your, I have a PDF of your presentation open, and I just don't see it on the site plan.
You can, not the truck doesn't do it any favors, but you can see at least on the existing condition.
It's not showing up on the site, on the proposed site plan, though.
Oh.
Or that one, not the landscape plan and not the site plan on the page before. Right? If it's an existing feature, I would have thought it would have shown up there and because this looks like a basically a survey without topo. So it just gave me pause that you were proposing a new wall there, since I didn't see it showing up.
It is the existing wall. We are removing as little of it as we can.
Okay, so but I I think you should make sure that these drawings reflect that, and and also, is it a freestanding wall or is it a retaining wall like it is?
It's retaining a portion of the structure.
Okay, so I think.
Sorry, not the structure of the existing landscape.
So I think that your site plans should include grading, because I think grading and grade changes are in our purview. Is that right, Joe?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, so I'm not seeing any. I I I want to see an existing site plan and a proposed site plan that show grading and grading changes. And and I think, you know, put put the effort into the elevation drawing to actually show what it will look like or what it does look like, rather than a concrete block texture. Have your have your architect put in the rubble stone texture. It just, it would go a long way to making this elevation look more appealing and 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 convey what your intent is, which is to keep it. My two other comments, the bays on the bays, it looks like you're changing to vertical siding, and I just I'm just a little, think about that a little bit. I don't think that's necessarily something that you'll find in the neighborhood, and while I understand you might want to switch it up, you could also do that by basically not having siding, but actually something similar to the Center Street house that we saw before, which is a flat board and or a flat hardy or some panel that would just, since it's mostly at this point windows and inset panels between the vertical windows, there's very little else besides trim. So just having that little bit of vertical siding that's kind of not really fitting with the dentals very well, I think, would be good to reconsider. And my last comment is on the the elevation where we see, it's called the right elevation. Yeah, that one. So I understand the the first floor here on this long elevation is the parking, the garage. But I'm a little surprised that you don't have ventilation requirements that would cause you to have to have openings rather than just mechanical ventilation, but would it look? Would it help the facade to incorporate some even unglazed window openings that might have some, you know, decorative ironwork on them or something that would just rather than having this, you know, what's going to be, you know, I'll just guess and say it's around a ten-foot windowless facade on the first story to give it some sort of scale. And you don't have to add all the windows that are, you know, on the upper stories, but maybe there's just some sort of something you can bring down, maybe the the double, the the pair here and there. Or maybe even a single window under the triples or something that would just give it something and not be a blank facade. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you want to respond or?
Sure, it was all all great feedback. We can certainly look at the windows. Eric is is our architect here, so we can certainly look to refine the the wall to add those details, and you know, I think the window idea is good, as long as we can make it work, so we will we'll take a look at that. Eric, anything else?
No. Here to hear, here to hear comments and and take them back to the order and see what we can do.
Okay. Are there any other comments from any of the other commissioners?
You know, we can go to public comment and
Do that.
Yeah, let me just share my screen. All right, and in earnest, I'm I'll read the script here. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at highlandacdc@boston.gov, and you'll have two minutes to make your comments. So do we have any?
Thank you, Joe.
Yep, you're welcome. Any public comment? I'm not, oh, here we go. June Seamster, I'm going to unmute you, and you can have your two minutes.
Great, thank you. It may had, it's it's been, my notes go back somewhere into twenty twenty-three. You guys have really moved. It, man, it's, it's been, my notes go back somewhere into twenty twenty-three. You guys have really moved this project along. Um, very small question, and I, it dovetails into what Angel was asking. For that existing stone wall, that's the part that's going to be removed to access the garage. What do you plan to do with the stonework that is removed? And then the other question is, um. Those of us that go by there know that some of the existing stonework is in disrepair. And what's, do you have any plan on um how to take care of that? Stone, existing stonework that requires repair? Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, I don't know, um, Matt, do you have a response to that?
I was gonna defer to Eric if he if he has one, uh, a little beyond the. The wrong wall, it's a little beyond my scope, so I'll defer to him and.
Right, I mean, in any, in any uh project like this, with any project with a retaining wall, when we come in, we're going to um have. Have to both shore it up, clean it up, clean up the area both in front of and behind it as part of it. Um, we're gonna minimize, uh, most likely minimize the excavation a- as much as possible. Uh, and and that's part of the reason the two doors are are the pedestrian door and the car door are so close together is to try and minimize the. Both the removal of the the wall itself. Um, the plan for it. Typically, in a situation like this, the plan for the stones that are removed is. That hopefully there will be enough of them for the repairs that are needed for the other length of the wall, but that that's the kind of beyond that. We don't plan to to store uh or or keep the the stones beyond what's needed to repair the rest of the wall.
Hey, thank you. And I'm not seeing any more. Comment, Ernest.
Alright, um. Thanks, Joe.
And I don't know if I'm still in my two-minute window.
Or we can, okay, go ahead, yes.
I'm just gonna encourage you all, since one of the things in Highland Park that we love is the stone. If you could figure out how to incorporate any of the remaining stone into the structure, we would embrace it wholeheartedly.
Repurpose is the word.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that was the comment I was gonna make. If you could find some way to repurpose that stone on the site for any stone that was left over. Assuming there might be some leftover from the materials. Um, and I, I'm, it's unfortunate that the. Truck was parked in front of the stone, so wouldn't be able to get a chance to really take a look and see how it's presented. But, you know, maybe next time we can see a. Better presentation of the existing wall.
So I will, I will just um just remind commissioners, you know, we're we're out of time to make a a. A a a motion and um from a staff standpoint, I really do think, um, you know, you got some good feedback, but I think. Continuing this application makes sense to come back with more developed detail. On the design of the building, as well as more details related to the retaining wall and uh. Proposed uh alterations to the design of the lower level of the garage. So I think, you know, it's still staff recommendation.
Joe, can I take that as a motion?
It's up to, it's up to the commissioners.
Yeah, I I would like to, as acting chair, I would like to take that as a motion, uh. Would someone second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
It's been uh moved and seconded the motion is what Joe has stated.
Okay, I'll do a roll call, so um Commissioner Costin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
And Commissioner Samaha?
Yes.
Alright, great, thanks. Thanks, everyone, and we will. I will text Andrew to return.
Thank, thank you all. Just, Mr. Cornish, just for the record, is that continued to a a date certain? Or or do you?
Ideally, ideally, we'd like to, you know, have you come to the July hearing if you'll be ready, but let's um, you know, meet at a staff. Let's plan to meet maybe next week on a staff level and we can um.
Perfect.
Go from there.
Works for us. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'd be good to see the clean drawings. Joe, who's next?
Yeah, I'm just going to uh text Andrew.
Alright, then he's back.
I'm back.
Oh, you're back, okay, go, great, alright. So we will next move to uh ten Malcolm X Boulevard. Preservation of the existing Roxbury Boys Club structure while replacing service parking. With a new public open space, construction of a six-story multifamily rental building. And construction of a three-story multifamily home ownership building with new amenity open space. And I think I see Daniel Riggs here and D'Artagnan Brown. Make sure you can unmute yourselves. Hey, Daniel. You are now a co-host. And D'Artagnan. You are now a co-host, and I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Wonderful, good evening. Can you?
Yep, we can hear you, we can hear you fine, and I will just see here. Read my comment. Okay. The applicant presented to the commission on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four for an advisory review of this project. During that review, commissioners expressed their support for the project and stated. That access from Malcolm X Boulevard side of the development would be preferred. And I'll just. Go to staff recommendations. Staff recommends approval with provisos finding that the work. To preserve the Roxbury Boys Club structure is appropriate and enhances. The historic character of this area of the district. The proposed new buildings are of an appropriate scale and complements the buildings in the area of the district. Considerable effort has been made to retain the existing retaining walls on the property. And to replace trees that will be removed to allow construction to proceed. Final design documents at seventy-five percent completion or higher are amended to staff. For final approval with the option of returning to the commission if staff feels appropriate. So Daniel and D'Artagnan, I'll turn it over to both of you.
Wonderful. Good evening, Joe. Good evening, commissioners. Great to see you tonight. Um, some of you may recall, we've had a uh advisory meeting, which we appreciated this uh team's input. And have since uh gotten approvals through BPDA, BCDC, and the ZBA zoning board. So with that, we're excited to be here tonight to run through our project. Next slide, please. And we'll, we'll keep this brief, just given the uh amount of information, but we can certainly go back in more detail. Answer any questions the commission has. We'll go through a quick project overview. Um, and then, given the breadth of material, really focused in on. Uh, drawings that are relevant and helpful to understand how we meet the standards and criteria for the uh Highland Park District. Um, quick overview, this, it's uh, address is ten Malcolm X Boulevard, the. Apartment building, which is on the Malcolm X Boulevard, will be. Uh, noted as twenty Malcolm X, that contains a hundred and eleven units. The residential homeownership uh component is twelve units on what is called Seventy Dudley Street. Um. Next slide, Dan, please. And part of the process, which uh we think is very. Um, impactful in how we've created a lot of the open space was working with Danielson at um Youth Build. When he was there, we actually hosted two annual workshops in our office where students from the neighborhood. Got to really come in uh in tandem with. Uh, Don Kimball from One Percent Gallery to really inform what you, what you'll see tonight. Um, our site, uh, very unique and very interesting. In the fact that it is on the northern edge of Highland, uh, the Highland Park District. And very, really only the part, only parcel that also fronts on Malcolm X Boulevard, and you can see it's. The one portion of the site that actually overlaps with uh Plan Nubian. Zooming in here, it's really uh outlined in the teal color is the site itself with those two overlapping boundaries. And there's quite a nice gray change that happens between Malcolm and Dudley, which is how we've uh worked to position the project. Um, and in in that regard, along Malcolm X, much more commercial in nature. A varied mix of uses, um, moving east to west uh into uh Nubian Square. As we flip over to Dudley Street, uh, more residential in nature. Although quite varied in density and scale, starting from the east at six uh Kellingworth. Um, uh, around seventy feet as we transition up to Dudley, ending on the Marcus Garvey on the west side. And not only does the scaling character change, um. But there's quite a bit of topography change along the site. Malcolm X really being at elevation zero, our site bearing anywhere from fourteen to twenty foot, uh, twenty-six feet in grade change. And then on the west end of Dudley, you know, fifty-plus feet above the Malcolm X uh level. Um, the site uh over the last hundred years has really had quite an uh a unique and amazing. Change in both the use, density and infrastructure, upper left, really. A hundred plus years ago in a much more vibrant mixed use. Um, uh, contextually set up as we move through the years, most recently. Bottom right, um, in the nineties, mid nineties, the realignment of Malcolm X Boulevard widening uh that. And really the clearing of the site, uh, which in the next slide is really um. Resulted in kind of a conglomeration of a a bunch of different. Uh, stone wall retaining walls to navigate the grade and then grades, and then most recently in two thousand. Uh, that was cleared to put up parking lots and uh uh tree landscape that was kind of supporting a parking lot use. Um, within the structure, I mean, that remain as Joe called out at the beginning, we are excited about preserving. This historic building, uh, we will work with the commission. Uh, during our documentation, we've done a lot of historic preservation work our firm has. Um, so that will be uh carefully uh orchestrated here, but also used to reposition. And enliven the entry into the existing building. And then as we move through the site, you can see the collection of parking lots. And uh the uh varied retaining walls, which we'll get into in a few minutes. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dan and thank you.
Thanks, D'Artagnan. Um, throughout our our design of the project, we really appreciated the the thought and intent that's gone into the creation of the district. Um, and over the next uh series of slides, we'll we'll show how we've um complied with those uh design guidelines uh and let them help uh shape the project. Um, focusing in on uh two of the major areas of applicable uh review um. That our project falls under, uh, items four and five. From the the guidelines, major landscape alteration. Um, and new construction. Um, so starting with the landscape elements, uh, knowing that the, you know, the intent is to preserve the overall natural landscape features. Um, we're excited to to show how our project uh complies with those. Guidelines. Um, so starting with our architectural site plan. Um, you know, these are all the the various components that D'Artagnan mentioned in the intro. Um, really, uh, the big feature we want to to show here again, that's the hundred and eleven rental units, the. Uh, commercial building at ten Malcolm X and our um twelve homeownership. Uh condos at seventy uh Dudley, uh, as well as our public plaza and the amenity spaces that uh knit those buildings uh together. Uh, the big change we like to highlight here, uh, Joe alluded to this at the beginning, um, since our last advisory. Uh, is the movement of our our previous entry to to twenty Malcolm X off of Dudley Street. And onto Malcolm X Boulevard. Here, which eliminated the bifurcation of the site. Uh, it allowed us to create this new uh green open space that really connects throughout the site. Um, and eliminated the the need to uh remove. Uh, any any stone wall from the site and and be able to just relocate and repurpose a very small portion of that. Uh, here that helps to shape the open space uh at the rear of the site. Um, uh, we paid a lot of careful attention to trees throughout uh the process. Um, you can see here on the upper right, the existing tree configuration that is on site today. Uh, largely shaped around the existing uh parking lots and consisting entirely of honey locust trees. Um, and you can see on the bottom left, our landscape architect really worked closely to preserve. And enhance all of the trees along the right of way. Uh, as well as adding um a significant number of trees along Dudley Street, continuing that rhythm of the street trees on Dudley. Uh, and greatly increasing the number of trees throughout the site, um, adding to the diversity uh of what is there through um. New native uh and ornamental species, um. Really helping to create a diversity of experiences um throughout the site. Um, looking at the the public plaza, zeroing in on that. Uh, currently, this is really uh just a landscaped embankment, uh, sort of a grass embankment that's not usable. Um, has a very narrow connection to the ten Malcolm X building. Um, so we put a lot of work into regrading the site, making an uh inaccessible uh public plaza. Along Malcolm X Boulevard that ties into our uh local retail use in the twenty Malcolm X building. Um, and also creating a a shared amenity space uh between the commercial. Uh, different residential uses um at the upper portion of the site. Um, throughout here, you can see again that contribution. Of public art that we're really looking forward to embedding throughout um the public areas of the project. Uh, another view of that public plaza uh here, again, showing that. Uh, new, much more connected entrance to men, ten Malcolm X that uh kind of goes fluidly from there throughout that public plaza. Um. Uh, as D'Artagnan mentioned, the the mix of uh walls on site, really the movement of that. Uh, parking entrance to Malcolm X Boulevard allowed us to. Uh, retain the vast majority of the stone exactly in place where it is today. And just rotate a small portion of the stone wall in place. Essentially, and allow that to shape the open space experience um of the rear of the site. Uh, and here's an image of that repurposed uh stone wall uh here, helping to really define um. And program that open space at the rear of the site. Um, getting into to the new construction uh itself. Uh, again, the the project's really designed to be compliant with the standards um of the of the district. And respectful of the scale uh and character of the neighborhood. Um, one thing we're really excited about is just bringing back some of the vitality of the site and that diversity. Uh, of activity and experiences uh that can be found. Ten Malcolm X Boulevard. Um, we also played uh close attention to uh complete streets. Uh, and designed within the BPDA Complete Streets Guidelines, um, so noting the the wider nature of Malcolm X Boulevard. Uh, the narrower, more residential nature of Dudley Street. And setting back our building on Dudley Street to have a modal alignment with our neighbors. Allowing for a um, a great network of planting and trees, uh, tree, uh, street trees to be continued along uh Dudley Street. Um, uh, really throughout the district, there's a a variety um to the massing in the height of the buildings and uh often occurring uh directly adjacent. To one another. Um, here's a a picture of uh a few sections of. The site cut through and and really, you know, we paid a lot of attention to trying to cite our buildings in a way that would be cognizant of that. Scale. Um, again, an aerial um showing again our massing in the height of our buildings. Um, this isn't a a view you really ever experienced. From the site, but helps to show just the the similarity in height and massing uh throughout the district and and carried into our project. Um, we'll have a series of uh of other contextual views um throughout the community. The next uh few slides, this is uh facing east along Dudley Street. Uh, this is a view from outside of the district, looking at the uh twenty Malcolm X building. Uh, as it transitions from uh the Highland Park area here towards uh Nubian Square uh to the east. Um, we paid a lot of attention to the existing uh historic features, both within. Uh, our existing building on site as well as throughout the district. Um, and took a lot of care to really embed those within the the architecture um. Of of both of our new buildings, uh, and here you can see that sort of being implemented. Uh, carrying over some of the richness and the detailing and the material quality from the existing ten Malcolm X building. Uh, over to twenty Malcolm X, letting those two brick buildings really define uh this public open space. Uh, and allowing that to also uh to differentiate the retail and and entries of the building. Uh, and here you can see again some more of that detail. Uh, sort of borrowing from a lot of those historic uh detailing examples, uh, making them a little bit more contextual and and contemporary. Um, and and really uh. Bringing that quality of uh materiality and detailing throughout um. Both of the new buildings that we're bringing to the site. Um, pivoting around to Kyle Row and Dudley. A view of the existing ten Malcolm X building with seventy Dudley in the background. And focusing again on the seventy Dudley Street building. That attention to the material quality of the architecture. Creating a really lively pedestrian experience and and street experience. And adding to that rhythm of architecture that's found along Dudley Street. And zooming back out for a contextual view along Dudley Street. So again, we wanted to keep it brief and love to kick it back to to you all. Thank you for your time and love to hear any feedback that you have.
Impressive.
Thank you, Ernest.
Excellent.
I'm sure that the other commissioners will have a question. So one of the questions that I have is. Not sure that I looked at it correctly, but. The project. Is on Dudley Street and Malcolm X Boulevard.
That is correct. Yep, it has two fronts, essentially Malcolm. X Boulevard with the existing curb cut that we worked with the city to retain. And then as you move about fourteen fifteen feet up on the midpoint, it fronts on Dudley Street. And that's how Ernest, we've positioned the the two buildings. If you go to the second, there we go, we push the position the two buildings to front on. Either and and worked with the scaling of that being more responsive to the Malcolm X in a more commercial nature and then Dudley in a more residential nature.
Got it, got it. And the walls at the back of the site. I guess, any idea how old those are? How far back in time? Those walls go? I think it used to be a courthouse right there.
There did used to be a courthouse here, yeah.
If you go back to the contextual, the maps of the evolution, so the the. Ernest, a hundred nineteen fifteen, there was the courthouse which stayed through. It looks like into the mid sixties and then it was removed in. Post that and a gas station was brought in in eighty-eight. And cleared again in ninety-four. If you go to the next slide, Dan. What we, actually, if you go, sorry, a couple slide, oh, no, actually, sorry, this is good. What we did, Ernest, is go through and document the the. The different wall types so that we were ensuring both the commission and our team. That the more. Relevant or the more site interpreting putting stone, it's really a mix of putting stone wall. Is what we're there to preserve and there is some newer kind of concrete. CMU wall that was used with the parking lot and and that, you know, that's not historically significant, so we're. You know, that will be coming up.
And how much of that, thank you very much. And how much of that is a retaining wall?
The length of the magenta is a retaining wall. And if you go down to our next, the proposed site plan. Here, here you can actually, oh, sorry.
Should I go back to that?
Yeah, if you go back one, I can't really draw, but if you show over the thing there, there you can see the split between the block wall and the and the stone wall.
Okay.
So the block wall will come out. The stone wall about twelve feet of it will will be. Removed, but then repurposed and essentially rotated like forty-five degrees to frame the open space. With the remaining length of that wall staying intact.
How much of the wall is staying intact again, about?
All of, I mean, all of it, except for the last twelve feet, which will be literally. If you show your cursor right there, Dan will be at that point, just rotate it back. And if you go to the site plan, we can show you that dash line.
Gotcha.
So they're right there. So see that hinge that comes off Ernest, looks like a leg?
Yes.
That's the portion that we're just going to push back because we've worked with kind of structural and engineering to have enough room around the edge. And it 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 did dual purpose that allowed us to, you know, repurpose it, keep it all on site. But if you forward a bit, Dan, it also became a beautiful backdrop to the the open space as well.
Yeah, it gave us a chance to make a place people could really engage with it.
Yeah, and they have some, you know, nice historic. Narrative to, you know, rather than putting in another new stone wall.
Got it. Looks good. Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other commissioners have more, I'm gonna sort of keep my comments down. Other commissioners?
Yeah, I can chime in here if that's okay. Thank you for this presentation. I would, you know, I've been seeing presentations now for. Over two years and I would rank this as probably the second best presentation we've ever seen.
Wonderful, I hope.
Great, great attention to detail, great thoughtfulness in in reading the study report. I I guess I wanted to start, the building on Dudley Street used to be four stories. Why why was the story removed?
Sure, Dan, if you don't mind going to that. So part of the process, Andrew, was working very closely with the butters. We hosted a number of butter meetings. And a couple of the residents right. Adjacent and across the street asked if we. Wouldn't mind taking off a floor there. We've taken floors off of both buildings. We we had four stories here, which actually matched across the street, four stories. And originally, Dan, if you put your mouse over the proposed building, it was actually closer. To the Fox's home, but we moved it an additional eighty feet. And kind of swapped the the parking, you know, to have just more enlightened air between. The foxes and our proposal, but also dropping down to the three stories. Which we were okay with because then it created not only, in addition to the modal alignment, also created a height alignment to. The Roxbury Boys Club building, which we're keeping. So architecturally, the narrative made sense and the ownership team was, you know, okay, dropping down that.
Okay, yeah, I I appreciate you working with neighbors. There is a four-story building across the street. So there is, there is precedence for four stories there.
Yes.
I just wanted to make that point in into the public record. But I do appreciate you working with neighbors. Regarding the stone wall. You know, I I totally get what you're doing there and I appreciate the. The detail and thought into. The stone walls and the, you know, historic part of the wall versus the newer kind of. The newer walls, right? I have no problem with you removing. The newer walls that were, you know, probably done in the two thousands. But the stone, the stone wall, it's, the standards are pretty clear about that, that they shall. It basically, it's pretty, it's very prescriptive, very. It just says the historic stone walls shall not be removed. Or alternated and except in limited cases. Where replacement is required and historic stone walls should be restored whenever possible. There is, there is. An exception. His modifications to historic stone walls may be allowed in certain cases. Where is, there is an overriding necessity for the property owner to create a, an access point. Stone walls removed. Removed, yeah, stones removed from the walls due to modification should be retained. Within the property whenever possible. Where it is not possible, historic stone walls should be offered to other property owners within the district. So it's very, it's very prescriptive. And when we wrote that rule about access point, we were. Envisioning a property which happens all over the district where it is completely surrounded by stone walls and they they don't, they need to make another access point for. A sidewalk or a driveway. But we didn't really envision the situation where the stone wall exists, but the building is new. And that you use the access argument. In that situation, so. I I do question that, but you know, again, the rendering that you. Made for that space is incredibly compelling. I'm just not sure that this, oh, actually. I'm very sure that the standard just doesn't allow that. So I don't know, Joe, if there, are we allowed? To ignore the shall statement?
I wouldn't say ignore, but.
In these, in these standards and criteria?
When you, oh, can you hear me? No, I was, oh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I wouldn't say. You can, you can't ignore them, but. When you're going to deviate to give a reason why, and this is. You know, a very different area of the district from where most of the other walls. Fly. So I think, you know, if, hopefully, if you're going to approve this project, that you're clear. Why in this particular situation, it's appropriate to deviate. From the guidelines.
Okay, but we're allowed to deep, we're allowed to deviate from the shell statements, it sounds like.
Yes, yes, you just have to give. An explanation why and it needs to be compelling and I, you know, and again, I think this is compelling because it's in a. Remote area of the district.
Okay, understood. I, you know. I twenty Malcolm X, the building itself, I. Is is a very large scale. I totally agree with it from an urban planning standpoint, but I don't know if there's. Precedence for that within the district of building that large. I believe the largest building in, no, the largest building in the neighborhood is Marcus Garvey Gardens. And I believe this building is is larger.
It's actually.
Especially FAR, if I'm calculating. Is it smaller than Marcus Garvey Gardens?
Yeah, it's not as big as the Marcus Garvey from an FAR perspective. And we did work with. In in a lot of detail with the BP date to design and break up the massing of the building. Including in the midsection, really pinching the building to preserve more of the wall. Interestingly enough, it's a catch twenty-two, but with the access. You know, not, I understand it's not an argument, but. By removing that bifurcating driveway, we are actually able to save more of the wall. Because at one point, one point, we were. Not being, you know, we weren't able to have access off of Malcolm, you know, everything was getting dumped into Dudley, which we weren't. Nobody was happy about from a residential perspective. So by shifting it over to Malcolm. And thinning out, you can see where Dan's cursor is thinning out the building, a lot, a lot more of the wall was saved. With that really last short section, just being mindful of. Being able to get the parking, keep it under the building, you know, not have all of that residential parking visible to the neighborhood. And it's really that. Small section that's left, that's actually, you know, when you're on. Malcolm X, you're kind of outside of the district looking in. We felt, you know, we we took a really solid approach at repurposing it, keeping it, making it part of open space that. You know. Would would address and kind of give reason and logic to why it was okay here.
Okay. We do, just to add one thing, we do have a need for, you know, life safety and fire access to the rear of this building as well, that that this helps facilitate.
Understood, yeah, that's a good argument though, but. The 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 district standards supersede all that. That's that's written in the in the standards. But sorry, I do, I will agree with you that the removing that ramp off Dudley Street was a. I mean, just a tremendous improvement. I'm really happy you guys did that. And I do like that you have that little notch taken out. On Malcolm X Boulevard that helps kind of break up that very long facade. And I I appreciate the correction that this building is, has a smaller FAR than.
Yes.
Marcus, I I was mistaken. So my other comments, let's see here. Bear with me here. Yeah, I guess that's that's all I have for right now. I'll turn it over to the other commissioners. Thank you.
All right. Just point the border here, what's the FAR?
Floor area ratio.
For, yes. Thank you. Never heard it initialized like that. Angela, you're on, I guess.
Okay, I have a few comments. First of all, I live in a house that was, that. Was owned by a judge in the Roxbury Municipal Court in eighteen ninety. Anyway, let's see. Are you doing any work to the existing? Building? At all, in this scope? In this project?
Yes. Oh, yep. So the front plaza. Which is a lot, just a lot of concrete and kind of really high and elevated will be cut back and worked into the new landscape approach of widening the facade. And then I think at some point, we will, we'll talk to the group. We may want to, you know, we were thinking of a repointing, going through. Checking the quality of the brick, watertightness. It did go through a pretty extensive. So really substantial renovation twenty years ago under the prior ownership. So infrastructurally, the building's in good shape. But we could imagine kind of tenant lobby improvements signage as part of an overall. Encapacitating, you know, look at the the development.
Well, yeah, like, you know, there's some decisions that were made twenty or more years ago that are. It would be nice if it was done in a palette that was harmonious with what you have here on this last slide, you know, the. The kind of, you know.
Yeah, no.
Postmodern and entry canopy, and I'm just wondering if any of these things are failing. Or at the end of their useful life, it is time to, you know, think of them as part of this project. And I think. You know, with everything that's going around this beautiful existing building, this is kind of. You know, the time to invest a little bit in that, in that infrastructure. So and I just want to also echo the comments that I thought the. Presentation was was is very strong and and I like. I like a lot of things that are going on in this. I did think at first the plaza was a little small. Until I saw the renderings and I feel like I'm convinced that it's, it's gonna. It's gonna work. It's it's a intimate level plaza, surrounded by these larger structures, but I think, I think that's a good thing. I really like the, how you're playing with the brick texture. You know, there's so many great examples of that. You're doing it in a modern way, which is appropriate. It's, it gives so much interest to the building. And I really love that color of brick, that kind of purply color. But. Is it the right color? For this development?
Yeah.
I I just, I I'm not, I'm not sure. I really do like it, just. Aesthetically, but I'm, I'm not exactly sure in this. In this context of red brick. If if the whole building. Should be that. I, it, it, it. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just gonna put that out there. Similarly, with what I'm thinking in my head is the baby building on Dudley, the baby version. Is it? Best to be more of the same or should it be? Kind of an inverse of materials? I feel like it, it kind of weakens. The the recipe to kind of just apply it. What I, and I'm sure there are differences, I'm just not appreciating them. Obviously, there's scale differences, but. Is it, is it the best idea to apply the same materials in the same proportions, basically? To the smaller building on Dudley, as you've done on Malcolm X? It might be, it might be fun to. And just kind of more. Expressive of the neighborhood diversity to kind of inverse them or just mix it up a little bit. And then just lastly, I was looking for the elevations and found them in the appendix, but you know, we we do need to review the elevations, so. That's, I'm glad that they're there. And it. I wouldn't mind seeing another drawing of. Just of the, of the new. Just of the, of the new buildings in ele, in full elevation without other, you know. Things going on, just so we can kind of really. You know, look at, look at things, um, but, uh, I think overall it was, it's a very strong. Strong, um, design and. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Angela. Thank you. Any other comments from any of the other commissioners?
Yeah, one more, I, I wonder if, if we're gonna, if, if this goes, um. For another round, so we can see the elevations and whatnot that, uh, Commissioner Ward Hyatt had mentioned. I wonder if, if we can get, uh, like a floor plan. Sort of compare, a site plan comparison to compare the sizes of this building compared to the Marcus Garvey Gardens building. My only concern would just be that if, if this building is indeed larger. That we, we are setting a new precedence, uh, with scale. I get it, it's on, it's on a big bou, boulevard, right? It's on the edge of the neighborhood, right, but. It just would be good to do our due diligence there, uh, per the, per the district standards.
Got it, is that a motion?
No, no, I think we have, uh, Ernest, I think we have to do public comment if the commissioners are.
Wasn't a motion, okay.
It wasn't a motion, it was just a, it's just a, another.
Observation.
Ask that, that, that could be a proviso, uh, but it may not have to be.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Joe, where are we?
All right, I'm going to, I think I'm sharing my screen, I'm going to go to the.
Script.
Script. Public comment, I'm almost there.
Good presentation, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions. And provide public comment on the application discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use a platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at HighlandACDC at Boston dot gov. And I do see, just see, one hand raised. See here. Okay, it says Black Market New Bean, if you can give us your full name, you'll have two minutes to make your comment. Thank you.
Hey, good evening to my neighbors, this is Kai Grant. Um, up at the top of Dudley Street across from the First Church of Roxbury. Hey, goo- good evening, you guys. Every time I see this presentation, it makes me smile. I really appreciate the forethought and the intuitive thought. That you guys have put in in terms of balancing out the built. Environment, which really has a lot of, uh, racist. Quantified, yeah, just so many different, you know, codified laws and things. Where they bulldozed, you know, historic buildings and left my neighborhood in shambles. You know, and growing up and walking down the street and, you know, being at that Roxbury Boys and Girls Club. You know, these things are very meaningful to folks that have lived here for a very long time. The green space, ah, a chef's kiss. The color purple, yes, the color purple. It's, it's just significant in many different ways. I think it complements the red brick. And just the, the landscape and, and acknowledgement of, uh, my neighbors. You know, the foxes and, you know, the nar, uh, Elizabeth's family and so forth. The process, I think, has been one where you guys really listened and you were in tuned. The last thing I'll share is that this is significant because this is Malcolm X Boulevard. And I think that having cultural infrastructure that can support our stories. And our historic figures and icons that don't have anything to do with colonization. But have to do with the dispensation of the African dissented. That moved here and migrated here and have been here since abolitionist days. Thank you, guys, keep up the good work, and I'm looking forward to being able to hang out at the gallery and. You know, just do some things, um, in my own neighborhood. Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Joan Seemster, you will be able to unmute yourself. You have two minutes to make your comment. Hello, yep.
Hello again, um, I wanted to. I wanted to set a couple of reference points that have arti, have been articulated in this presentation and came up in a previous presentation last fall. I'm also, besides being a resident of Highland Park, I'm also one of the co-chairs of the Highland Park Project Review Committee. And as such, we understand what the definition of the Highland Park catchment is. And my understanding is that this is the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District, which means we only deal with. Structures inside Highland Park. I want to just call out very gently that we're referencing structures outside Highland Park in this presentation. And comparing them and talking to them as if they are part of Highland Park. I would caution us. To not reference structures outside of Highland Park, because this is a Highland Park only ACD, it is not a Dudley. It is not in anything but Highland Park, and I would like to use that discipline and that inward looking. From the edges in versus the edges out to other neighborhoods, I really caution. Because I think that sets a precedent, uh, where our density, our community. The way we interact with each other, building to building, is being ignored, and in this case is. Dudley is being used as a reference point, which is not the correct reference point for this building. Or for this, um, particular project. It's also referred as a remote area of the district, it's not remote at all. We're so small that nothing in our district is remote. As a matter of fact, there's people on this call that we're also working. I wanted to call out that right next to the top. At twenty Malcolm is a BPDA piece of open land at the BPDA that we're now talking to the BBDA about. Doing some kind of housing structure there.
Joan, you're at your two minutes, so if you can wrap it up.
Okay, so my point is. There is gonna be building next door to that, and I don't know what responsibility this. Development has to the development that will go in next door, but I would like us to put that into the consideration set. That it, um, aligns or that it provides for building additional housing to go in. Right next door to it.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Good point, Joan, good point.
All right, Lee Peters. Be able to make your.
Joe, I wanted to ask you to clarify what you meant by a remote portion of the district. What does that mean? And how these projects will be evaluated.
I shouldn't have said remote, I should have said. On the boundary.
Uh, I, I have a question, if there are any other public comments. Joe, um.
Finished?
No, I believe public comments are finished.
Oh, we haven't closed public comment, but.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I didn't, was Mr. Peters finished? I guess so, okay, sorry.
No, no, I just want to check my email to make sure. Okay, I think we're, I think Ernest being closed public comment.
Did Andrew have more to say as part of the public comment?
Well, no, Andrew's the commissioner, so he can.
He can always speak.
Pardon, pardon for jumping into the public comment before it was closed. Joe, is it, is it common in other historic districts in Boston? To, to use precedents outside the district? For justification of buildings inside the district, is that, is that common, or is it sort of unique to our district?
It's case by case. I, I, I know in the situation in, in Bay Village where, when two twelve Stewart Street was. Approved, it was looking at other buildings outside of the district.
Okay.
It's all, it's all case by case, and, and again, I think, um, you know, the context of the, of the remote part of the district. That was really looking at the retaining walls, you know, we were looking at the retaining walls, and I think the retaining walls on this area. Of the district are different from the ones that we typically see in the district.
I'm not sure I agree with that, but, um, I understand your point, um, I believe. But I guess I would be interested to hear exceptions for that wall from the other commissioners, like what. What, what exceptions, um, would, would justify us overriding a very prescriptive statement? So I would just be interested to hear that from other commissioners. It sounds like we have to add something to the record. To, to override that, so.
So, Joe, I'm not sure I understand the difference between the retaining walls, it seems like we were talking about. Portions of the wall that's. Yeah, was recently put there. And then the wall that's been there historically. And then we had a project where if parts of the wall may not. Materials from the wall may not be used on site.
Right, I mean, we looked at it, but like, we looked at a project where. Just recently, parts of the retaining wall were going to be removed and retained on site. We didn't approve that, that was continued.
To be continued, right?
That, yeah, that previous hearing item.
So we have some open items then, okay.
All right, so that was three seater square.
Yes.
Uh, I would, I'm sorry, I, I don't want to interrupt you, Ernest, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So I would, I would, I think we're ti, you know, it's, it's, um, high time we make some motions here, so. I would like to entertain a motion for a continuance.
Well, dude, well, I think, Andrew, you're not, you're not the chair, so you can make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I understand, make the motion and I'll entertain it while you're making it.
Can, can I, is it okay to make a motion, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Ernest, sorry, sorry for, I, I'm not. Procedures.
That's, that's okay, I'm new at this.
Yeah, um, so I would like to entertain a motion for a continuance. Uh, to see the elevations, oh, with the following provisos. To see the elevations, uh, as asked by Commissioner Ward Hyatt.
Angela, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Angela Ward Hyatt. Uh, to see those elevation and elevations as asked in context. Uh, without everything else, maybe I'll remove some of the trees and landscaping, so we can see the buildings in context. And with the additional proviso. That, uh, we see this building, um, compared to Marcus Garvey Gardens. Uh, in, in, in detail, you know, the, the size.
FAR.
FAR, you know, how, how wide is it compared to Marcus Garvey Gardens, how tall is it? You know, how long is it compared to Marcus Garvey Gardens?
Right.
Just, just, just so we understand if truly if this building is larger or smaller or about approximately the same size. And, uh, I guess, I guess that's it. Thank, thank you.
Can I amend that? To say, to include also, um, of a scope, if any, of any, uh, restoration. Required as part of this project, um, to the existing club, yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I, could you speak up a little bit?
Uh, just, I would amend that to include a, a, a definitive scope of any restoration. To the club that would be, um, included as part of this project.
Okay, thank you.
Not just the, not just the concrete, you know. Hardscape, but the building itself.
That sounds great. So we have three provisos.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, I'm, I'm, if, if, if the feeling is that the, the material color palette is, is right for the neighborhood, I'll, I'll. Back off my suggestion that. It be, uh, studied further. Like I said, I, I, I love that color brick. I, I absolutely love it, I'm just. I'm, I'm just not sure it is right for this particular. Part of the neighborhood, but. I'm happy, I'm happy to be wrong.
Is it red or, I mean, is it purple or lavender?
May, may I answer, Joe?
Oh, of course, yes.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. Um, so Angela, that's a great question, it's an iron spot with a little bit of a magnesium. Color, the key thing to note is when we did go through the BCDC process. And the BPDA, we had a red brick initially, and it was competing too much with the. Existing nature of the Roxbury Boys Club building. And during that process, the commission asked us to look at the color palette and by shifting. To a modern take of the brick, still in, in a tone, you know, it's not a charcoal gray brick. But it's got hues of a purple and a, a red.
Used it before, yeah.
Yeah, it was much more, uh, complimenting and cognizant of a newer structure rather than trying to compete and match in tonal quality. And be like three percent off and look like a mistake.
Okay.
So, so there was a lot of, um. Efforts in picking, um, that tone, because it, it really, it, it. It was interesting when we, when we saw the shift in the renderings, it was like, oh, jeez, that makes so much sense.
Tartanian, is, is that the same type of brick that was used at the new building in the back bay on Newberry and Dartmouth at the Aubrey? I, I think.
Yeah, I think it's like that, and we.
Because that's, that's a great place for commissioners to take a look to see how that.
Yeah.
What's the address?
We, we also used it.
It's in the, it's in the back bay, the corner of Dartmouth and Newberry Street, it's the, the new building called the Aubrey.
Yeah, and, and if you've seen the, do you know the Horizons for Homeless Children Building in Rox, um, further down on Columbus Ave?
I'll find it.
Yeah, we did that building and we used the iron spot magnesium there. And, and, you know, it turned out beautifully, um.
Is it similar in color to the bowling building? I mean, I know that, that, that.
Yeah, I think so, and we're happy, yeah, we're happy, and as part of the, the, um. Design review process, we'll have to put a mock-up color palette. More than happy to come back to the commission, our goal is to always work with, you know, the various commissions and, and have a project everybody can be proud of at the end. In a similar fashion to that, Angela, at this point, because. The commercial, the, the commercial tenants are fully occupied in. Ten Malcolm X, the, the Roxbury Boys, the, the, the approach was really just on signage and exterior landscaping. If we were to do, there's no plan, work immediately for that, if we were to do that, say, once getting through the residential. We are more than happy to come back to the commission with this project-specific application for that building.
Wow, sounds like a date, then, let's do it.
Awesome, and we love historic renovation work, you know, I know we've, Joe knows us, we've done a ton with them, um. With the, the various landmarks commissions throughout Boston, so it'll be more than our pleasure to come back specifically for that. But at this point in the, um, process, we're really focused on the residential and then the public open space. Uh, which is Kai mentioned earlier, well, you know, we feel is gonna be a, a dramatic improvement to the vibrancy of the neighborhood.
Wow, thank you. Angela, you good with that?
I, I'm, I'm good with that, I, I, just one more before we, um, and I, and Andrew wants to say something too, but before we, um. As we're kind of making amendments or refining the provisos. Is there any other, is there any appetite to, um. Changing the materials a little bit more? Or at least the proportion of the materials used between seventy and twenty, uh, seventy Dudley and twenty Malcolm, I just.
So I could speak to that as well, if it's helpful.
Okay.
Yes.
So we, we did go through also a, a really nice, uh, process with that, where we probably looked at four or five. Different approaches to that building. And the thought there was, there, there is a lot more uh defined character around the windows, the size of the openings, the depth in the window to the brick, um, the the stoop entries. It's really taken, we didn't want a complete foreign approach, but we wanted to take the materials. Um, they are applied a little bit differently and a lot of that wood is brought down to grade where one enters the building off of a stoop entry. So we, we spent quite a bit of time kind of scaling down to a more residential, and that was part of the question Andrew had, reducing the height allowed it to feel a lot more like the uh townhomes of row houses in the nature. So we did study several iterations of an approach to that and felt very comfortable and, you know, got really great support both at B B P D and B C D C on how we resolved the approach for that fenestration and articulation um on the homeownership side.
Okay, you know, I think maybe that will just become more clear when we have uh kind of uh just the elevations.
Yeah.
Really focus on each building and, you know, uh.
And we did have, uh, we did have the elevations in the set.
In the appendix, yeah. I I'm, I'm looking at it on my other screen right now. It's just, they're very small and they're not, there's no. Uh, yeah, there's just uh, it, it's, it, it's hard to see what's going on because the buildings are so small in in on the page. Um, there's no.
Yeah, I think that was, sure, I I mean, that was tying it more into the fabric of the.
Yes, yeah, and I, I appreciate that. Um, but maybe just a, a pure elevation drawing. Um, so we can see this detail that you're doing. So, yeah, that's fine. I, 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 I'm gonna um acquiesce.
Alright, so a motion's been made and duly seconded, I believe.
Well, I think um, I Nicholas Lordany, we have closed public comments, so I'm sorry, we're, we're not going to take any more public comment.
Can we just take one more than tha- that one? Can we just take one more, Joe?
Sure, you're the chair, okay.
Alright, that's.
But only two, only two minutes. So Nicholas, you have your opportunity. You should be able to mute yourself. Nicholas?
Last, last comment, Nick.
You can remute it, Nick.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Nicholas, you'll have two minutes.
Okay, all I want is two minutes. All I need is really two minutes and it's just about process. And it's just that I want to try to see if we can do some kind of reconsideration of any kind of certifications of some of these meetings, particularly um One Elmwood. And I'm just sort of trying to be respectful.
So I'm sorry, we're, we're, we're limiting public comment.
Well, you can limit it to all you want, but, but, but I can talk about process. That's my due right. Um, to talk about, and that's what I'm gonna do. I'm not gonna talk, I'm not talking about a project. I'm gonna talk about the process, which is my due right. If you deny that to me, you will, you, you, you know, you can't deny me that, okay? So let me just speak for a minute. Okay, do I got another thirty seconds? I won't mention the, a particular project, okay? That's right, correct?
Thirty seconds.
Go.
Am I allowed to speak?
Go. You have thirty seconds, go ahead.
Okay, basically, I would like a reconsideration of any of the meetings where there was no uploading of the minutes of the meetings, which is required by the law. You're breaking the law. And you're supposed to furthermore give the consideration for the reasons that you came up with the, the ideas that that are taken into full account, uh, the final report of twenty twenty-two. It's not an advisory thing. It's a regulatory body where you can't just take part of the considerations, that you need to do all the considerations to, that that says a bill. By the way, I heard another thing earlier about this process, this particular process too. You can't use buildings outside of the district. That's why we have the boundaries of a district.
Thank you, the end of comment.
And that I've sent into the committee, and I'm hoping that you will, I understand it was not within the fifteen days, but I really seriously think you need uh to reconsider what we did and base it on the bylaws that, bylaws, by the way, that are illegally not shown. You need to have bylaws. Every meeting we've done is invalid. The points that you make when you approve something, it is not valid. That's all, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Very much, Nick, for your participation and um I would hate to think that I've been invalid all this time, but I will definitely take a, another look to see. Joe, anything else on the agenda?
Oh, no, wait, wait. So I think um Commissioner Shelburne, if you want to restate your.
Motion.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, it got kind of um.
Go for it.
It got, it, we, we, we got off track a little bit, but.
Yeah, go for the motion.
Stayed on track. Uh, so the, the motion is for a continuance. Um, and one of uh the provisos are the following. That the proponent come back to the commission with elevations of the buildings shown in context. Uh, without the trees or landscaping kind of blocking the elevations. Um, and the proviso um that we compare twenty Malcolm X in in great detail uh to uh Mark, the Marcus Garvey Gardens building to determine if it is indeed larger or smaller or taller or approximately the same size.
Yeah, the F R A.
And there was one other proviso that Commissioner Ward Hyatt had. I'm, I'm letting it slip right now. What is it?
Do it, let her do it.
Where uh it was about the existing building, but I think we've heard that that's gonna be a separate, separate and separate thing.
Okay, okay, so those.
Can I take that as a first and a second on the motion?
I, I second that motion that Andrew just made.
Alright, thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Angela. Uh, the motion has been moved and carried.
I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Costin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelburne?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
And Commissioner Samaha?
Yes.
Alright, thanks everyone.
Moved and carried. How we doing? The meeting, nothing else on the agenda tonight, right?
Just very quick, just very, very quickly, I'm just going to say um update, I.
I'm sorry, I have one comment.
On, on what?
On, 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 uh, it's not a, I'm not asking for a change or anything. I'm just, it's about uh town Malcolm X, the project we just discussed.
Alright, we just, we just had a motion that was.
I know, I'm not trying to change that. I'm just trying to say that we, we actually, the standards criteria don't allow us to, to dictate colors.
Oh, okay, good point. But anyway, we, we did it anyway.
Oh, yeah, we.
I don't think that, that wasn't.
We commented on it. We commented, we didn't dictate.
Yeah, I know. I, I'm just, I'm just making sure that everyone understands that's not in our purview for colors. I, I love, yeah.
You're on vacation, Andrew. You're comfortable, you're relaxed.
I'm sorry, I'm too, I'm, I'm a stickler for these details.
I think, I think uh although I would, I, I would, maybe I need to look at the bylaws a little more carefully, but I think that's paint color, um, but a, a brick color is inherent to the type of brick that you're choo- choosing.
That's well, well, well stated. Yeah, we are allowed to discuss um materiality. We are allowed to ar- uh argue for greater uh detailing and and uh high-quality materials, but um, yeah, that, that's about it. Okay, so we good?
Uh, we have other things on the.
Yes, I just wanted to do a, a quick update, Ernest. Um, I did distribute the um, the draft of the bylaws um with the only comments that I have received from Commissioner Shelburne and I, I distributed those. So I think what I would like to do is ask commissioners um to give me comments by July eleventh and then hopefully we can have a, you know, maybe discussion at our hearing on July twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
And I see Commissioner Shelburne has his hand raised. What would you like to say, Andrew?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just, I, I do, this is critical that we get these bylaws in place and, and I really, I believe the bylaws say that we can create a separate meeting, a separate hearing, a public hearing to discuss the bylaws without having projects. You know, I know that, I understand this, these me- meetings get very long and especially at the very end to have a one-hour discussion about the bylaws is very challenging. We're all volunteers, right? So I believe the bylaws do allow us to have a separate hearing, public hearing, to discuss whatever we want, really. I mean, within reason. Um, and I would like to respectfully request that we have a separate meeting that doesn't discuss projects to discuss these bylaws.
Joe, is that possible to schedule that for all of us?
Yes.
Alright, and you would let us know?
Well, if, before I was interrupted.
Ooh.
I um was hoping to ask for comments, additional comments by July eleventh.
Yes.
And I had thought we could further discuss on the twenty-fourth. You know, I know we're in summertime. If, if commissioners want to have a hearing before the twenty-fourth to discuss bylaws, how do you feel about that?
Um, have, my question before I answer that, did you send the bylaws out yet and I haven't seen them?
Oh, I did, yes, yes.
Yeah, we've had them for a few months, I think.
For a few months, I don't remember seeing them.
I'll reset, I'll resend them tomorrow.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. So I mean, but so what, what's the appetite here for commissioners? Do you want to have a hearing before the twenty-fourth or?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful myself. I mean, I don't know where the time's gonna come from, but I think it would be helpful to put an hour in to go through the laws, just the laws before we make any more, you know, the si- the comments on projects.
Yeah, I would, I would just, you know, but my point is, is that do, do commissioners really want to discuss the bylaws in detail after having a three-hour hearing? Is that? Do people want to do that in the future?
Probably not, but I, I have reviewed them and I, um, and I don't have them in front of, I had, I printed them out, they're at home. Um, I'm still at the office. Um, but I don't recall having any specific um questions that weren't answered by just reading the whole thing, so.
Okay, I have a whole list of questions.
Okay, okay.
And I, and, and I did distribute those.
Yes.
I appreciate that, Joe, thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Thank you, Angela. Thanks, Joe.
No, well, you're welcome, but I'm, I'm not quite sure what the, the direction is um regarding these. I, I don't, I, I don't think it's realistic to have a meeting between now and the, you know, and the twenty-fourth, but I'll leave it up.
Can we have another meeting sometime in July, a separate meeting in July to discuss this?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that it's between now and the, and the twenty-fourth.
Of July, yeah. I, I think it'd be worthwhile for an hour. We could find an hour somewhere somehow.
Okay, well, I'll send out a, a poll, um.
Even on a weekend?
No.
No, 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 no.
No, I would.
We volunteer enough time. Let's not do this on the weekend.
Um, alright, what I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll redistribute the bylaws.
Thank you.
Send out a poll to try to pin an hour, you know, let's try to do an hour meeting.
Yeah, just an hour.
Yeah, and that's, and it, it's a public meeting, so.
Oh, okay.
Oh, are we done with the bylaw discussion?
I'm sorry, Andrew.
Are we, we're, we're done with the bylaw? We're going on, we're on staff updates now?
Yes, yes.
How is, how is the process?
So, uh, excuse me, um, so staff updates, that means staff makes the updates.
Okay, okay. I have a lot more questions.
What it seems, and if, if there are further questions, you can email those to me.
I do email them, but no one replies.
Staff updates, um, what we will, um. I just want to say we're wrapping up our uh interviews for the preservation planner position and we're wrapping up our interviews for the um commissioner appointments to the, um, from the neighborhood.
Nice, nice.
And with that, I end, I end my staff updates.
So are we all wrapped up now?
Well, I have one more comment.
Well, I, I don't, there's nothing, sorry, Commissioner Shelburne, we don't have, you know, if you have another comment, you can email that, but that's all we have.
Yeah, I just would like replies to my emails. I, I do spend an enormous amount of my volunteer time emailing you guys.
Between, yeah, that's a conversation between you and.
Yeah, but I just don't get any replies, so I'm just.
But I, I doesn't, everything should just be in a public hearing setting anyway.
In a public space.
Well, I'm being told not to, I'm being told to email.
No, I know, but there's, there shouldn't be a, a conversation. I think, I think it's appropriate for, for him to, him to receive the comments and then we'll make a point of going over them.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I would imagine.
Yeah, if you, if, if you email something, Joe, email all of us.
No, he can, no, he's not supposed to do, no, that's a violation of.
I can't do that.
Let's not have this conversation now.
Yeah.
Alright, are we all good with anything else? Joe, you, you finished everything on the agenda in terms of.
Yes, I completed my staff updates.
Alright, only thing left on the agenda is uh the adjournment. And there doesn't need to be a motion for that, I remember.
No, no, we do, we need a motion. We do need a motion and a second to adjourn.
Certainly, make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Samaha.
I'll second.
Alrighty.
It's been moved in second. I declared this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for participation.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
The overtime and the commitment, thank you very much. Good night, stay safe.
Good night.